Good morning, everyone. We're going to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. And while we do that, we see Patrick Pittinger in the back of the room, back there. Hello, Patrick. Good to have you back in Carson City. So, good to see you. All right. Could we have a roll call for the record, please?
Good morning. Supervisor Bowden.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here. Thank you. Could we call on Leslie Seer to give us the starting -- to get us on the right foot today? Thanks. And her husband is -- Mark is in California with the wildfire issues down there. And I think on behalf of all of us, please give him our best and pass that along to everybody down there, please. All right.
Why don't you please bow your heads with me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for today and all the promise that today holds. We pray for your grace to alight on our fair city and that we may be blessed with prosperity and goodwill for one another. I ask, Lord, for your guidance on today's meeting and that you would bless our city leaders with wisdom and discernment as they make decisions that may concern many. Due to this fire season, Lord, we want to lift up in prayer those who are responding to the many fires and just pray for their safety and effectiveness. And our hearts go out to those who are suffering from the smoke and for those who have lost so much. Lord, we just want to lift up a prayer for rain and we pray for supernatural comfort and relief. And it is in the name of Jesus that we pray these things. Amen.
Thank you. Supervisor Bowden. I'm going to ask that I -- I sent a note back to the board here saying I was in the birthplace of democracy and Supervisor Bonkowski rightly said, you know, "That's Greece, Bob. You're really in Philadelphia." But so, it's the birthplace of our democracy in the United States. And, you know, it's humbling to go back and see what people did some -- all those years ago in candlelight and by fireplaces. You know, the foresight that folks had, the debates they had, it kind of makes some of the things we do here in Carson City pale by comparison. I mean, you know, we all get -- we all do things here. But those folks who got us started in this country were some really beautiful thinkers who did a wonderful job in creating -- and I think I speak for all of us, the world's best nation. So if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Thank you. All right. We're now on item number five, public comment. This is the time for anybody to comment on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the body. We also take public comment where appropriate during the agenda items. Anybody this morning? I don't see anybody. Okay, then we'll take up six. Approval of the minutes of July 19th, 2018.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for July 19th, 2018, as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Do I have it here? There it is. Okay. Now we'll take up the agenda. I've been asked to pull item 13B and E. That's the impact fee issue. So we will pull that one from today's agenda. Any other things to be pulled, please? Anybody?
D.
D?
13D and E.
Did I say B? 13D and E, I'm sorry. 13 Delta and Echo. Okay. Any other changes? Unless there's an objection, then we will take the agenda as published. We'll adopt the agenda as published with the exception of items 13D and 13E, which will hold for a later time. All right. Now let's take up the consent agenda. Any member want anything pulled from the consent agenda? Not a whole lot this morning.
Yeah.
All right. Let's take up motions and order on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of item 8A.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay, let's now go to non-consent agenda items. Item number 10, Carson City Airport Authority. This is 10 Alpha. This is to approve a lease agreement for a lot line adjustment on the lease between Carson City Airport and John Mays. I have a disclosure to read before we go down this issue. The disclosure reads as follows with the assistance of the district attorney, Mr. U. NRS 281A .420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. Steve Takeus is legal counsel to the airport authority. I work with Steve at the law firm from which I retired, but I no longer have a substantial and continuing business relationship with Steve. Therefore, a reasonable person in my position would not be materially affected by this past relationship. Additionally, Steve is -- is he here today? He's just Ken, right?
Just a minute.
He's not here.
He just wrecked.
He just -- he's here for approval on an airport lease amendment, something he must do pursuant to statute, and therefore this is a routine procedure or matter before us. In the interest of full transparency, I'm making this disclosure, but because I do not have a disqualifying conflict, I will be voting on this matter. Okay, any other disclosures? Mr. Moan Lindelaw, the Chair of the Airport Authority. Good morning.
Good morning.
The airport manager and the president. All right. So what are we doing?
Good morning. On July 18th, the Airport Authority Board met in this room to discuss a voided piece of property to the north of Jet Ranch that is owned by one John Mays. And the issue arose when Mr. Mays approached the airport about installing some solar panels for supplementing electricity on his property. We did a site survey and determined that that area that he was looking at was not part of his leasehold. So we went through and had a survey conducted of the property, determined the acreage should be approximately 7,560 acre -- or excuse me, square feet.
That's a good number.
Yeah, right. It just changed the whole dynamic of the airport, didn't it? So that piece of property is not usable or could be rented to another individual for that purpose. It sits between a fire lane and the property lot line of Jet Ranch. And so, in discussion with a survey -- had the survey completed and the board discussed the inclusion and a lot line adjustment to his lease and was approved on July 18th, that will be leased at the current rate of 12 cents a square foot per year, approximately $960 a year, additional revenue for the airport authority. So our position is that we would like to see the Board of Supervisors uphold the airport authority's approval and lease amendment for John Mays.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Ken, are there any restrictions on the use of the land?
It's strictly going to be used for that solar farm that he's installing.
So no occupiable improvements?
No occupiable space, no additional ramp or any of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Linda, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
You want to tell us anything about hot stuff at the airport?
Well, the one thing I would comment on, and it's strictly informational, is we've been working for some time to try to get included in the state's local government investment pool for our designated prepaid lease funds that are in excess of what we need to adjust into the current period and for our reserves. And that was done last week, and we were able to check to the treasurer's office, and we should be increasing the amount of revenue to the Carson City Airport Authority substantially over the next year over what we've been receiving from the bank. So that's one of the big things we've done just recently that I'm very proud of.
Good. I think you should be also proud of the grant you got.
We did. $850,000 to resurface our taxiways and approach roads and so forth, and that's going to be a nice project that'll start right after the air races this year.
All right. Any questions? Public comment? Anybody? I don't see any who have a motion. Supervisor Bowden.
I move to approve a lease amendment for a lot line adjustment on the lease between the Carson City Airport Authority and John Mays.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job out there. Thanks, Ken. All right. Let's take up item 11. Sheri, CFO. How you doing this morning?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
Okay.
Okay, so --
We do this routinely, but why don't you talk to us a little bit so everybody knows what we're doing?
Sure thing. We do. We do this ambulance fund write-off twice a year. We do this to ensure that we don't keep items on the books which are not collectible. It's this for this half of the year. It's $392,362.86 is what we're asking to write off. This is not the final chance to collect. These will go to hard collections. We don't end up typically getting a lot from hard collections, but we still attempt to collect them going forward.
And just so, you know, we ask this question, you know, every time it comes here, you know, what's the cause of having so many uncollectibles? If you know, if there's a general idea?
Well, right now, I believe, because everybody has to have insurance with the ACA, so I believe it's just transient people that are in our area that just can't afford the ambulance that get hurt, and we have to do our duties, so.
All right. Supervisor Bonkowski, Brad.
I just wanted to put on the record that when we changed our collection system, I believe it was at the end of the year in 2013, we were averaging at that time about 18% in bad debt. And now with our new system, we're averaging about 8.5%. So the system is obviously working as broken as it may be. It's working. Thank you.
Good point. Good point. All right. Any other questions? Public comment? Anybody? All right, motions and order. Who wants to do it? Supervisor Bonkowski.
I move to approve the application to remove the uncollectible accounts receivable specified in the application from the records of the ambulance fund for a total amount of $392,362.86 in uncollectible accounts receivable.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Okay. All right, now let's take up item 12. Who's doing this?
Thank you.
Ms. Akers and Mr. Von Schimmelmann. Okay. Item 12 is the possible purchase of various components of hardware and software through a joint contract with Converge One, Cisco Dell, CDW Government LLC, and others. So why don't you tell us what's happening here, why we're doing it? Eric, you can tell us why we need to do this.
Good morning. Eric Von Schimmelmann, Chief Information Officer. Yeah, so what we're doing here is we're bringing forth the jointer contracts so that we have the ability to purchase hardware and software throughout the year. These companies are the companies that we primarily do business with, and throughout the year, and historically, we've spent about $1 million over the last couple of years throughout the city departments. So I gave you a breakdown of some of the projects that are coming up, some of the others that are unanticipated come from public works, different departments. They call us up and say, "We need a new computer for this," and we don't know where those fundings are coming from until they tell us. So, but it's kind of the overview of what we're doing here.
Okay. Carol, anything else?
No, just that they're all joinable contracts with participating agreements. I know that there are two that will expire prior to the end of the fiscal year. One of them does have a new RFP that's currently out, so it should be awarded before the end of the year. And then the other one will probably be extended. It just has -- the amendment hasn't happened yet to renew that. But our plan is probably to bring that back in probably late May, because I know one of them's, I think, doesn't expire until May 31st. So either the end of May or, well, actually, I guess June, we'll probably bring everything back for the new year, including the renewals.
Very good. Okay. John, Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the breakdown.
All right. Other comments, questions, panel? Public comment? Anybody? All right. Motions and order.
I move to approve the purchase of various components of hardware and software through jointer contracts with Insight Public Sector, Converge One Inc., Cisco, Dell, CDW Government LLC, Microsoft, and SHI International Corporation for a total annual amount not to exceed $1 million, to be funded from the various city accounts as approved in the budget and allowing for the $190,000 that may come from various different sources.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay, we'll next take up item 13 Alpha. This is planning. Do you need time, hope? We're on -- we'll be -- stand in place for a few minutes here and get -- so you get set up, okay? We'll just, as I used to say, somewhere along the line, at ease for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize. You moved quickly this morning.
You know.
Okay, so this is a request for master plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. I'd like to take the two together. I'm sure you just announced that. The Planning Commission considered this item at the meeting of May 30th, 2018. For the amendment to the master plan, the Planning Commission voted 5 to 2 to recommend approval of the amendment. For the zoning map amendment, the Planning Commission voted 6 to 1 to recommend approval of the amendment. For both of these requests, the -- oh, you can put it on the floor, it's good. For both of these requests, the Commission conducted a public hearing, considered the required findings, and made a recommendation to the Board. Only the Board may amend the master plan, and only the Board may amend the zoning map amendment. I'm going to speak to --
Well, this is not an appeal. This is a straight-up --
Yes. Only you get to make these decisions.
Right. Okay, just want to clarify the record.
Thank you. In terms of the master plan, Blackstone is -- the request is for adoption of the Blackstone Ranch specific plan for a 27-acre area at the east end of Railroad Drive. And if you look at the map that I've posted, you can see the subject site. The proposed specific plan addresses design standards and guidelines in public service and infrastructure. This is not a development proposal. There seemed to be some confusion at the Planning Commission. This is a policy document. What I kept saying at the Planning Commission, and I'll say it here, is we're creating the rules of the game. So what the master plan tells us is that -- well, let's back up for a second. So what's our master plan? Our master plan basically gives us our guidance for all decisions affecting growth and the use and development of land. Within the master plan, we have Chapter 8, which identifies four different specific plan areas. One of these specific plan areas is the Lampa Ranch area, which I have posted, and it's on page 588 of your packet. The Lampa Ranch specific plan, I believe, was a placeholder with general policies intended to provide a framework for the development of this area within the blue boundary. The idea was to provide comprehensive development with balanced land uses, create cohesive neighborhoods, ensure adequate vehicular and non-motorized circulation within the specific plan area, ensure compatibility with future development -- of future development with established neighborhoods, ensure adequate public facilities, and make sure it doesn't adversely impact public health, safety, and welfare. This 27-acre area is within this Lampa Ranch specific plan area. What the master plan tells us is that when you go develop land within the Lampa Ranch specific plan area, you may not do it until you create a specific plan, which again creates the rules of the game for future development, and you rezone the land. So that's what's before you today. When this is considered, what we look at is all of those policies in our 2006 master plan regarding the Lampa Ranch specific plan, and we ensure compliance with each of those policies. So in your staff report, I've gone through every single policy, and I believe we have compliance with every single policy. I don't plan to address every policy. I plan to address one. Okay, so I'd like to speak to -- I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get there yet. Lampa Ranch specific plan policy 2.1, roadway linkages. I think this is our focus area, and if there's questions on other parts of them, happy to go back and talk about those. This is the biggie, though. Okay, so in 2006, the -- I keep calling it the 2006 plan just to distinguish it between the specific plan being considered today. The Lampa plan called for a general vehicular circulation network that included at a minimum a collector from Fifth Street to Railroad Street across the Linear Park. And on the plan before you from our 2006 master plan, we see that collector road going from Railroad Drive all the way up to Fifth and then through the property to the north to Highway 50. In order to create compliance with the existing Lampa specific plan, the Blackstone Ranch specific plan area, Section 3.6B, calls for the extension of Railroad Street -- and again, I know it's Railroad Drive, but the master plan calls it Railroad Street -- as a collector to the northern boundary of the Linear Park at the time the subject property is developed. That doesn't get us to Fifth, and we realize that. We anticipate that the land to the north of the Linear Park in terms of the roadway network at that point in time, because that's part of the Lampa Ranch specific plan, it's within that blue boundary, at that time when that development is proposed -- I'll go back there -- we would at that time achieve that alignment.
It doesn't happen in a lot.
If it never develops, then we don't achieve that alignment.
Then you don't achieve that alignment.
Correct. It would only be --
How do you address that, then?
Right. No, that's a fair point, and we struggled with that. And honestly, in working with the applicant on this application, I think our biggest challenge was the transportation network. And so, we did a couple of things. One, we needed to achieve two points of access for three reasons. One, we were seeking compliance with the master plan. Second, the -- I think it's Section 15 of our development standards, it might be Section 12, I'm not remembering exactly, says when you have a subdivision of land which is defined as more than four lots, you need to have two points of access unless the city engineer deems differently. And third, we have a fire code, which tells us at the 31st unit, you need two points of access. So we were trying to address all three of those items while recognizing that we had an applicant who didn't have control over the property to the north and who only had a single point of access. So unfortunately, Dan Stuckey couldn't be here today, but I want to speak to his sort of logic that he applied in identifying why not to require a full secondary access, but to allow the secondary access to be emergency only. And there's three points essentially. One, the uniqueness of the site. The only access right now to this land is Railroad Drive, with the land bounded by the Lampa land to the north. It was our understanding they could not get a permanent access through the Lampa land. End-out land to the south in the freeway to the east. Secondly, the thought was that any road to the north would be potentially temporary in nature, because if and when the land to the north were to develop, at that point, the alignment would be established to Fifth. So if right now the secondary access couldn't get you all the way to Fifth, it would just be a temporary road. And was that really in the interest of the city if the intersection of Salomon and Railroad was functioning at a level of Service D or better? And so the thinking there was if we have a functioning intersection, the emergency access would suffice. And third, we were achieving the full improvements across the Linear Park, coupled with the pedestrian bicycle access to Linear Park, which was going to improve access to the school, and was exactly the mitigation measure suggested in the transportation plan. So that was the logic. But Mayor, you're exactly right. We don't know if or when that property to the north will develop.
I agree with you. I just want to understand the arguments here a little bit. So if you go down that road today on the -- not knowing that the railroad can't be driven all the way north to Fifth Street, if you go down, if that's an uncertainty, you know, help me satisfy the butterfly in my stomach that says, "Okay, we did this today, zoned, master plan. We can't finish the railroad drive. Now we need a development, because we're never going to get that. We need to develop this piece of property. We got the secondary access that goes right through Fremont School, you know, that's not a secondary access." What happened? I mean, because I can see that happening, saying, "Okay, we can't get it. We got all these homes, we got people to get there, so let's just leave it one access with the emergency access." And I can see that happening. So, and it seems to be the same argument that we would get when the homes, you know, when they go to actually construct. Help me understand the, you know, how that would be addressed if they go to build? I mean, would you say, "No, you can't because you don't have a secondary access?" Or, "No, you can build because you've got an emergency secondary?" What would your position be then? Or the Planning Commission's position?
If the specific plan were adopted as written today, compliance would be determined at the time of tentative map, which would be our next discretionary review. As part of that discretionary review, you'd be looking for master plan compliance. So as part of that tentative map, and I do want to mention that in the traffic report, there was sort of a conceptual plan, but by no means have we received a development proposal on this project. At the time of tentative map, if this was adopted as is, they would do a traffic analysis. If the traffic analysis showed a level of Service of D or better at the intersection of Railroad and Salomon, based on the proposed development plus background traffic and so on and so forth, then they would be allowed to make the improvement with an emergency access as their secondary access. If the Board found that that wasn't appropriate, that at the time of tentative map, you're going to be looking for two full access points, and I think the applicant's prepared to put something on the table to that effect, but with a timing element associated with it, then the plan there -- I'm sorry. Then at the -- let's just say hypothetically, the specific plan said there will be two full access points. Then at the time of tentative map, we would be looking for compliance with that. So I don't know if that answers your question, but the net of it is, if this is approved with only the emergency access as the secondary access, compliance with that requirement would cause the staff to recommend approval of the tentative map, and then the building permits are just ministerial.
So in other words, then, what you're saying, what you're saying is, I don't know if the butterflies went away or got worse.
Got worse.
I mean, because what you're saying is that, is it really we're crossing that bridge today?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, you got it, so the applicants here, they -- I need to understand this second access issue, because, you know, that's going to be required, but I don't want us to get caught in a position where, I mean, me, anyway, where we have a zone -- we do a zoning change understanding that, hey, there may not be a second access down the road. How do you -- I mean, that's a difficult position to do, so I'll let the applicant tell us why they think they could do that, so.
Do you want to get out now?
Sure. Get at it, man. Go. Hi, Josh, come on up.
Good morning. For the record, Mike Railey with Rubicon Design Group. With me is Lauren Chilson, the project traffic engineer. As some of you may know, we did have a community meeting that we held with the residents that live in the neighborhood there off Railroad and the surrounding streets. Obviously, access is one of their biggest concerns as well. What we have done internally and looked at it with, in terms of easements that we can acquire and whatnot, is we can commit within the specific plan to do, from day one, the emergency access, as Hope discussed, but then put a trigger in there. So we're saying upon the 40th unit that a full public access would have to be provided for secondary access. So that gives the city some assurance that if that access could never be built, for example, the units would be capped at 40, but we anticipate that by that point, we can figure out where that road would connect to, or if there's nothing to connect, we would connect it so it's a full public access. I think the other thing that we've committed to the neighbors at that meeting is, before we come forward with a tentative map, we're going to sit down with them again at another community meeting and look at other concerns that they raised, so we can address those prior to submitting our tentative map. And I think, I'm very confident, we can address the other concerns that were raised at the meeting through the next discretionary review. However, I would like, Lauren, to just kind of give you some background on the traffic so that, so we understand kind of what those volumes would be.
And before we go there, tell me why it's important, if you're willing to put a trigger in later, why is it important to make this decision today as opposed to, "Hey, we've got the pieces in place, let's rezone and go"? got the pieces in place, let's rezone and go, because we're all satisfied, we know there's a secondary access, it's not going to be an unusual burden on the existing residents there, only having one road. Why is it necessary to proceed with the zoning and master plan change today?
Well, we need the zoning and the master plan in order to move forward with the tentative map. That needs to be in place in order for the tentative map to be considered. And I think, and I think Lauren can speak to this more, that we're very confident that is, in terms of an access and safety thing, that 40th is really probably, I'll let Lauren speak to this in terms of volumes, but will not generate any noticeable impact in terms...
You mean, what you're saying is even if you had full development there, there wouldn't be any noticeable impact on Solomon Street or surrounding neighbors?
I'll let Lauren speak to that.
Good morning. Lauren Chilson with Traffic Works. So we have completed with this application of a traffic impact study specifically for the project, and that included 112 units in total. That was the concept at the time, and of course, this is, this action is not for a specific project, but that's what was contemplated in the traffic study. And what it shows is that at the Solomon and Railroad intersection, even at full buildout of 112 units, and in 2025 with future growth, the intersection would function at level of service B, Bravo. So that's well within the policy level of service D. So even at full buildout with background traffic of this project, the intersection is not going to have impacts. It functions at level of service B with or without the project, and the incremental difference is very small. So we're already confident that the intersection will function well, that Railroad will function well, and so the remaining discussion really surrounds emergency access, which is, Mike just mentioned, would be provided from day one, and then recognizing there's interest in, you know, having multiple points of access, we would do that later in the project at 40 units or beyond 40 units, so that'd be required.
That traffic study that you're referring to, was that teed up and discussed at the planning commission in depth so that there was maybe an analysis of the traffic study? Did staff do an analysis of it? So staff believes that, let me put words in your mouth, and if there are the wrong words, you let me know. Staff believes that the traffic analysis has been done, satisfies that, that you don't need a, you don't need a full secondary access on that piece of property, if you build 100 homes on there, 112 or whatever it is. That's what you're saying?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to agree with that statement.
All right. Well, then we've got to help, help me understand.
There was a traffic analysis that was completed and was brought forward to the planning commission and is in your packet. It does demonstrate a level of service that's better than D. Having said that, in the specific plan, there is a requirement for a traffic study associated with the tentative map. The tentative map is sometime in the future. We don't know when. Could be five years, could be 10 years. We don't know what the background traffic will look like, we don't know what the level of service at that intersection will look like, which is why that there's that input, if you will, in the policy that says they have to demonstrate the level of service at the time of tentative map, not back when it was, the policies were being put in, because we're saying, when's this development going to occur? And by the way, if we're going to have a level of service worse than D, you need that full secondary access. So we're relying on a future traffic study associated with a future entitlement.
Suva Zerba.
Just a question, Hope. What, was the traffic study conducted at prime pickup and drop-off time for the school kids at Fremont?
Lauren Chilson, yes, the traffic study was conducted with school in session during that AM peak period, so we made sure we captured that. Of course, the late afternoon period does not, because school is out, that evening commute period, but yes, we did capture the school periods when we know school was in session.
And if I can just add to that, at our, at our community meeting, we did commit to doing some counts with the future tentative map during that, the afternoon pickup, because we hear that there is stacking on railroads, so we'll look into that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, make no mistake about it, the staff would 100% prefer two full access points for this project. It was the challenges of the specific site, as I outlined, that caused us to be where we are right now, but clearly, two full points of access is compliant with our development standards, it's compliant with the fire code, it's compliant with the master plan, and should that be where the board feels this specific plan needs to be, the staff would, one, we would never second guess you, but we would certainly agree that that's consistent with the three documents, if you will, that we're relying on.
So, maybe I can ask the fire chief for a discussion, because while I recognize that you're offering at the 40th unit, it's really my understanding from even our fire code, that it's the 31st unit that would create it. So shouldn't, shouldn't the fire code take priority? Because I guess we have competing interests throughout the whole project because of the land, because of the specifics of the land. So I kind of look at it too as, I don't understand, is there a hierarchy? And so should the fire code, is that, would you do it at the 31st unit, right?
Correct.
If you can clarify for me. Because how do we select the hierarchy if we're going to do that versus just saying two points? Should we just do two points and forget it? But 31st unit? Okay, thanks.
That is, that is the fire code correct.
Thank you there a minute, I'm sorry.
Good for you. This takes some thought.
Yeah, it does.
I'm trying to find out, and I asked our city manager during an earlier session, we have the planning commission recommendation, which was not unanimous, on both this item and the next item. I'm curious about community development and planning's recommendation or lack thereof, and I'm having trouble seeing through to that. Can you enlighten me?
When this came in, I believe our first and primary concern, there were some other tangential things that I'm not even talking to you about. I mean, I'm talking to you about one policy, because this is the issue with this specific plan. Clearly, there's a mandate for two points of access. It's in your development standards, it says when you have a subdivision, you will have two points of access. By definition, a subdivision means more than four lots. We also have a fire code we have to comply with. We also have a situation where you have one point of access, essentially Railroad Drive, and you have existing homes there. Absolutely, in a perfect world, we would be here saying 100%, we need two points of full access. What we had was the challenge of this particular site, where we needed to have a third party involved to achieve the secondary, full secondary access. I think we were advised that that wasn't going to be feasible, and so we attempted to meet the spirit of the law, but our A plan, if you will, was two full points of access. Given the challenges of this particular site, we have brought forward to you a specific plan that has the full point of access with the emergency access, given that if the level of service at the intersection of Railroad and Solomon is worse than D, you don't get tentative map approved without that second full access.
Do I read that as no recommendation either way?
The recommendation of the planning commission is what's before you.
I understood that in my question. What's the community development and planning recommendation?
Again, the entire staff works on this together. We have fire at the table, engineering at the table, everybody is at the table. The staff position is what's before you, and that's to have the full access on Railroad Drive with the emergency access, provided the level of service is greater than D.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just finish my presentation, it's about five minutes less, less.
I just jumped in the middle of it.
No, it was important, so I think that was the right thing to do.
You're very articulate, Hope. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to talk about procedural item real quick. Procedurally, we're looking at a master plan amendment. Should the board, and actually Commissioner Barrett's question kind of feeds into this, should the board make a recommendation that's substantively different than the recommendation given to you by the planning commission? This item will go back to the planning commission, but only that substantive change for a public hearing, and then we would bring back to you the comments of the planning commission. I also would like to make just a, I'm going to recommend a clarification change, and I'll thank Commissioner Bagwell for pointing this out. On 136C, it talks about that an additional point of access that does not rely on Railroad Street must be improved, so on and so forth. But the idea is Railroad Street's going to be extended. So we want to be clear that an additional point of access that does not rely on the portion of Railroad Street from Solomon Road to the western boundary of the Blackstone specific plan must be improved in advance of any final subdivision map approval with the use anticipated to generate more than 39 trips and so on and so forth. So the rest of the language stays the same, but that was just some clarifying language to make it clear what portion of Railroad Street we are looking at. In terms of the zoning map amendment, the applicant seeking to rezone the property from agriculture to single-family 6,000, the planning commission considered the three required findings a fact and recommended approval by vote of six to one. You do have late material in your packet from both the applicant and the existing property owner requesting to defer the effective date of the zoning map amendment to the date of transfer of ownership. Actually, the staff is not supportive of that. We've had a lot of meetings, both with the DA's office and the assessor's office, and Dave Dolly, and I think Kimberly Adams, I haven't looked in the audience, but I know Dave Dolly's here to speak to it, and Dan Yu's prepared to speak to it. But essentially, a zoning map amendment does not necessitate the need to pay the, an agricultural deferred tax, provided the land is still functioning in a way that qualifies for that deferral. So the implication in these letters is that upon a zoning map amendment, the deferred tax would be due, and that's not the case with the caveat that the land must continue to be used in a way that will qualify for that ag deferment. So again, Dave Dolly was kind enough to join us today to provide further clarification on that point, and Dan Yu is prepared to speak to that point. And with that, Mayor, I will stop, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Could you go back to the map on, this spa map? Point out on that map, if you would, where...
The other one that you have, the property.
Right.
The site-specific one.
Where on this one would the secondary access be?
The staff did not dictate secondary access. I think early in our conversations, we were, we were asking for secondary access to Fifth Street.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. The emergency secondary access, where would it be?
It is not delineated, it would need to, what we've done is provide a performance standard. It would be up to the applicant to work with neighboring property owners to identify the alignment, and we would look for compliance with that alignment at the time of tentative map. So again, we're just establishing the rules of the game so that when the entitlement application comes in, we ensure compliance with those rules.
You know, personally, you know, the development probably is going to occur, but, you know, the specific plan area right now shows Railroad going north to Fifth and then north to Highway That's where we are today. And so what we're really saying is, no, that's not what the specific plan area wants. I see, Lee, that specific plan area does not require that any longer.
Actually, it's interesting... Listening to you, because I'm reminded immediately of the comments of Paul Eswin at the planning commission. Commissioner Eswin was very frustrated. He said, when are we going to get these roads constructed? You know, these roads are an integral part of the specific plan, and the truth of the matter is, roads get constructed as land develops. And so when you have a gap between two developments, the road usually will not connect until that, that gap, if you will, is developed. So I appreciate your frustration, and I appreciated Commissioner Eswin's frustration, but that's sort of how it plays out.
And you hit the nail on the head there a little bit, Hope, but, you know, what we're saying by this move today would be, you don't need to drive that all the way from north. You don't need to do that anymore. That's not, that's not going to be a requirement of this specific plan area anymore, any longer.
Actually, I'm glad you just brought that up, because, again, Commissioner Bagwell brought to me, and I'm finding it right here, yes, 3.6B, I've just posted it, she said, what's that sentence at the end? It doesn't say anything. And what it says is, consistent with the Lampa Ranch specific plan, the intent of the collector street is to connect Railroad Street to Fifth Street. The reason that sentence, which Supervisor Bagwell thought didn't say anything, is in there, is because I wanted to be clear, even if we had a temporary alternative alignment, by no means was the city giving up on the alignment to Fifth. And so this was a placeholder in the specific plan to make it clear that the ultimate objective is for the collector from Railroad to connect to Fifth, and that when that land to the north of the Linear Park develops, the expectation is that connector will be there, and no one can make the argument, oh, the city decides to connect to Fire Box or to connect to a different street in lieu of the connection to Fifth. Maybe this is inadequate, maybe this seems a little light, but I put it there as a placeholder to make the intent of the city clear.
Can you go back to the map?
I'll add to that, too. So going back to the map, you see the full specific plan, and this is similar to what happened on the north side of Fifth Street, actually, as the phases develop, those improved, those improvements, those connections within those applicable phases get constructed. So the, what this specific plan, and we haven't really even got to yet, we've talked about access, but what it does is, this specific plan for the far-south portion requires them in this development to connect across the Linear Park and connect to that path, so that when the rest of the property develops, they can be required to make that complete connection. So that, so this is being, this development is being required to connect to that framework system.
And what the applicant is saying here is that they want to build the first 40 homes before they do anything?
No, no. So even with the very first home, they are required in this plan to connect across the Linear Park, to create that framework system for the future connecting to Fifth Street with the first home. We're talking about have actually getting to another right-of-way by the 40th home or 31st or whatever it ends up being, is what's being proposed. But with the first home, the framework across the Linear Park to be connected to the future Fifth Street connection will, is required as part, as written today.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I can add a little bit of light to this. The proposal is to create with the first home, that emergency access that most likely will go north and connect to Fire Box. Begins to build that infrastructure going north, that'd be over the Linear Park, generally to the north, and then that would, since we're not able to go all the way through that property, connect to Fire Box with that emergency access. And then at the 40th unit, that connection would become public, so we'd have a second access with the 40th.
The second access would come off Fire Box.
A public, toward Fire Box, appears to be the best alignment.
Fire Box would then exit onto Solomon.
Correct.
Correct, right?
Correct.
By Fremont School.
Correct. We've researched many, many alignments, and that's the one that can be made that's in the vein of creating this arterial collector north to Fifth Street. This is the first segment of that. That makes sense.
Go back to the other, sorry, if you can put the other...
Fire Box is to the north of Fremont Elementary School, adjacent to the school.
Okay. Tell me why, tell me why we're not, I mean, I assume that if you had your druthers, you'd want Railroad extended, because you don't want, you don't want a road coming right out at Fremont School. I mean, granted, you know, when the school's in session, maybe the... I mean, granted, you know, when the school's in session, maybe the traffic isn't there, but it's a disaster. I mean, sometimes I think it's almost that way right now when you go down Solomon Street, when schools are getting in or, you know, and I appreciate the fact that you've done a study. I mean, but tell me why you don't want to get all the pieces in place before you go down this road? Because as I said, the next step is, okay, we've got 40 homes built, let us finish the rest, and we'll develop the road. And I, you know, I fully understand what Hope is saying about development pays for the road, you know, as you go down the road. But I'm concerned that it's going to stop there. We're going to build 40 homes there, and then the next, you know, we're going to have a secondary access that's emergency-only, and then we're going to come in and say, "Well, we can't get the other -- the property going north, so we're going to live with what we've got." And that's the box I don't want to get in, if I can help it. So help me understand how we get out of that box, or, you know, because I assume that, you know, from a development standpoint, you don't want to go down and develop property where you may or may not be able to build more than 40 homes on it. I mean, because at that time, you do 40 homes, and it's a trigger, and we come back, we don't like your traffic study because, for whatever reason.
Right.
I mean, help me understand what the theory of it, that is.
We're in a difficult situation that we can't control the property in the north, so we're doing everything we can from day one to create that emergency access, and then self-imposing a condition that says, "We're going to stop at 40 lots if we can't ever get anything more than public." That's a reasonable number that can be served. We've already stated that 112 units could be served at Level Service B with one access, so it's not a traffic operations issue. It's really a matter of emergency access issue, right? We know traffic operations, that's not the issue. So how do we make this first piece make sense? How do we make it logical in that it can connect eventually to Fifth Street? So we say, "Let's build the first piece, let's provide the emergency access from day one, and if it stops at 40, we stop at 40." Obviously, our applicant does not want to stop at 40 either, so there's motivation there to make the full connection, but he can only do that within the controls that he has and influence he can exert over adjacent property owners. So that's the challenge that we are also motivated to work through.
And I guess that's a challenge that, you know, okay, never mind. I don't know, supervisor Barron, then supervisor Raybald, then supervisor--
Thank you. How does your statement regarding your traffic study square with our Department of Committee Development and Planning, saying that in the future, it could be more than a B and go to a D? And, I mean, what you're saying is, you're talking within the loop of your own study, you're not talking about future development, right? Thank you.
So, may I answer the question? So our study looks at the build-out that's in the travel demand model that's provided by Campo. It goes out through the year 2025 and includes all known development in addition to this development. So we have looked in that forecast and said, yes, I mean, we're not looking at just today. We have already looked at the future and said it's Level Service B with that build-out. So it would have to grow significantly to get to D, and I'm confident we're not going to get -- we can come back with another study in a year from now for tentative map, it's going to say B again. It's not going to go anywhere near D.
I trust you recognize that we have to look beyond 2025 even. This build-out in this community would be 80,000 roughly, and that could come as late as 2050 or 60.
Traffic volumes would have to grow significantly to get to D.
Help me understand why a Fairview connection isn't a possibility.
A number of options were pursued towards Fairview. There are some industrial properties there, all under private ownership again, and, you know, the challenge we're up against is, we have to have a willing party to connect with. We cannot force that on others.
And one other thing, if I can just even add to that, if you look the way the freeway off-ramp comes, and because that's an N-dot controlled right-of-way, and there are offset requirements from that off-ramp, it pushes it back to where it wouldn't be feasible to align a road to come back out.
So I guess part of the challenge really lies in when you purchased a piece of property and made a decision to do something, that you're aware of what the code is. And so what challenges for me is, you knew that our code required, in the specific plan area, two points of access. I mean, you knew that, and yet you determined that it was worthwhile to take an odd piece of property in which you could not, like you said, control those other property owners. So you knew you had a, I guess you could call it landlock in a sense, right? You have a landlocked piece of property because you don't control the adjoining ones. So I'm struggling with, why should we make an accommodation versus we should just stick to our code? Because that's what people rely upon, and that's all of our development standards. And what I'm concerned with is, we're getting partial projects that would stub to the Linear Park, but then it's going to be 20 more years or 30 more years, and so we don't accomplish the goals of the master plan. That's what I'm really struggling with, and I get that you have a unique property, but I also understand from a public point of view, they don't get what a Level B traffic is, and a Level C, and a Level D. The people there live there every single day with a school district on the corner of Railroad, Fire Box, and Solomon. And the school is expanding, and if you see the actual parking, the drop-off, the helter-skelter, none of that can be considered in a traffic count because they're not parking well so they can drop their children off, and that's not counted in what you're looking at because you're just counting a car trip, not the actual congestion of the school itself. And so I'm very concerned about not having the second point of access, and I don't want to be that it's horrible, but I don't want an accident or issue to happen at 7:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning because that's when it's going to happen. And so help me understand why, other than you're just a landlocked piece, we shouldn't have you comply, and why not 31 units? I know the 40 you used for the traffic, but even if I was going to try to compromise, I just don't see how I can do something other than even the fire code.
So one thing that we worked through when we were looking at the code is, this particular development actually has two points of access. It has both the trolley-Jocks access and railroad. So it has two. Yes, there's one leading to those, but how that's defined exactly is perhaps gray, but it does have two points of access. So that's one starting point. To address your comment of 31, we're providing emergency access at one, at the first home. So fire code's asking for that by 31. If I understand that correctly, we're doing it at the first unit. It's the public access that we're saying will not exceed 40 homes until we have a public connection.
But it's for the public to exit also, and if it's only an emergent -- I think the fire, unless I'm mistaken, yes, I want the fire trucks in, but don't I also want the people to be able to get out? I mean, it's a two-way emergency.
Yeah, I think-- I guess my perspective is, I prefer if those folks use Railroad instead of Fremont. Certainly, there's adequate capacity. Why wouldn't we just say, 40 homes fits fine with this intersection, use that intersection? Don't go up by the school and increase potentially the level of activity up there, let's stay down at Railroad. Sorry, Fire Box.
Oh, I was going to say, Railroad is the school.
Well, the school is on Fire Box, or adjacent to Fire Box. So I bid my preference to the traffic, stay down at Railroad.
Just for the record, supervisor Bonkowski has a question, but just for the record, are you an escrow or do you own the property now?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. If you can't hear me in the back, tell me to stand up closer to the mic, he's back there. Okay. Are you an escrow now, or you own the property? Just to clarify the record.
Blackstone is in a joint venture with the property owner. So the applicant does not own the property at this point.
So you're an escrow, then?
Well, it's a joint venture.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. I got you. All right. Brad, sorry.
So I just got a clarification that it is a joint venture between Blackstone and the property owner, so the applicant is the property owner as well, is involved.
Mike, is there a reason why if you're contemplating providing an emergency access from the first home, that that emergency access couldn't be a temporarily improved public access? So in other words, not built to our current development standards, so no curb, gutter, sidewalk, but still compacted base and maybe asphalt? So that you have two public access points from day one.
That's something that we would definitely have to work out with engineering, and I think really the kind of the reluctance to make that a full public access to begin with is to go and do the curb, gutter, sidewalk, whatnot, where that alignment, based on what could happen in the north, could change. So it was our intent--
Right, but that's not what I'm saying. What I'm proposing is, if that is a temporary public access, so it doesn't require the curb, gutter, and sidewalk, but still has to be paved, is that something that could be contemplated?
I think, before I could commit to that 100%, we'd have to see what, exactly what that standard would be with engineering, just to make sure from a cost perspective, if it was doable, you know, if we could afford it, essentially. If there is a way to work out, you know, some sort of modified standard, I think it'd be something that we would definitely consider.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Commissioner Bonkowski posed this question to the staff in advance of this meeting, and Dan Stuckey is not present, Darren's present if he wants to add anything to what I say. Dan Stuckey felt that that would be acceptable to the engineering staff. However, he would be concerned about the construction details, given the uncertainty of the timing on it, but those construction details could be a function of the tentative map and looking at the improvement plans. But in terms of whether or not it would be okay from an engineering standpoint to have a full access to Fire Box, the way you described something less than city standards in terms of the roadway, but allowing the public access, that was something Dan Stuckey felt he could support, but he would be concerned about the construction and the depth, if you will, of the subgrade and the grade and so on and so forth from a maintenance perspective. But again, not something that I believe needs to be addressed in a specific plan in terms of construction details.
It seems to me, and I'm, of course, not the expert, but that a second public access that's temporary to Fire Box, that would then have the trigger, whether that's 31 homes or 41 homes, that it would then have to be a permanent public access with, subject to our full development standards, would be a potential solution if we can work out the details. That would allow for two public access points for this subdivision because, just listening to the conversation here, there doesn't seem to be a big appetite for just the emergency access, while at the same time allowing the developer to start the project and generate some revenue before he has to put in the permanent access, whether that permanent access ends up being Fire Box or whether it ends up being Fifth Street, which, of course, we've determined is undetermined. So anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Again, for the record, just to clarify, is one of the joint owners, the joiner, the landowner to the north, one of your joint applicants?
I believe it's, and I'm, I give a concentration, I believe it's a member of the same family, but a different individual.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else you want to add, anybody? Who would take some public comment here? Yeah, go ahead, Hope.
Very quickly, for the record, Lauren Chilson mentioned that at the time of submittal, the applicant believed he had two points of access with Jock Street being a secondary access. The staff did not agree that that was a secondary access, so I just would like the record to be clear on that point.
I guess I didn't understand that. Say that, Claire.
Essentially, if you look at the map that's posted, you'll see railroad stubs out to the subject site, and then you take trolley to a street called Jocks. Jocks is not labeled. The applicant believed that Jocks in Railroad constituted two points of access. The staff did not agree with that.
All right, I got you. All right. We've got three chairs up there. Somebody wants to come up and join Mr. Harder, or if he's--
My name is Lee Harder. I live on Jock Street. There are four houses on Jock Street. I live immediately adjacent to the pasture in question. I believe both the amendment to the master plan and the zoning plan should be denied because, first of all, the plan is not in compliance with the municipal code, nor is it in compliance with the master plan. There's been some discussion about the uniqueness about the corner of Railroad and Solomon. It is helter-skelter at pickup and drop-off time for Fremont School. There are kids everywhere. There are arrangements between the church, which is also at the corner, where kids can go there if there's a disaster, let's hope not, you know, school shooting type of thing. The kids are marshaled down to the church. The church houses the kids when it's raining. The church parking lot is already used for loading and unloading because there's so much congestion at the school. There are pedestrians all over the area at loading and unloading. It's a unique intersection, and peak times would be between 7:15 and 7:45 in the morning, and 3:00 and 3:30. The traffic engineering study that was presented already was deficient and did not comply with the municipal code. The municipal code states clearly, "The study shall clearly list all assumptions and criteria on which the analysis is based." The analysis must include, as a minimum, they have to indicate how peak periods were identified. Finally, here before the board, but not before the Planning Commission or before the staff, we hear some acknowledgement that the morning traffic count was apparently while school was in session. The Planning Commission and the engineer apparently did not have that beforehand. The code requires that traffic counts be included for a typical day, including dates, time, and weather conditions. None of those were included within that. So the traffic analysis is inconclusive and incomplete, upon which most of the rest of the materials were based upon. For the first time, we understand the engineer is apparently, city engineer is waiving the requirement for the secondary access. Nobody's seen that except staff. That wasn't part of the public record beforehand. The AM peak and PM peak hours are all through the traffic analysis, but what are they? The code requires that the peak times be clearly identified. They aren't. Since the traffic analysis shows absolutely no pedestrians at the corner of Railroad and Solomon, it obviously wasn't, either wasn't studied, or they were not included in this very important piece of information. At best, we have a description of the traffic analysis peak periods in the description presented by Rubicon. Rubicon says it was done on a typical school day. That's all they say. We don't have the full information. And most of the analysis is based upon that traffic analysis that concludes that no mitigation measures must be taken. I believe that because of the incompleteness and inconclusiveness of the traffic analysis, everything ought to be put back for study by the Planning Commission and the engineer. We've discussed at length the other problems of the municipal code requirements for two accesses. It cannot be changed except by the city engineer's waiver of that requirement, which this member of the public hasn't seen and was just brought up at this point. If the city engineer relied in part upon the inconclusive traffic analysis, the engineer's study should be-- accesses. It cannot be changed except by the city engineer's waiver of that requirement, which this member of the public hasn't seen and was just brought up at this point. If the city engineer relied in part upon the inconclusive traffic analysis, the engineer's study should be questioned a little bit more. One of the things which we've had before this, which is kind of the elephant in the room that nobody's talked about or only mentioned, and at best, as Hope mentioned, there's a third party involved, and why, the problem why this project does not meet with the master plan. The third party is Mr. Lampa, who owns the pasture to the north of Linear Ditch. I have not personally spoken with Mr. Lampa, but from all the feedback I get from everybody else, Mr. Lampa ain't going to sell that property and develop it. So all of this talk, what Blackstone wants to do is hypothetical. You know, we have to get him in the room. Part of the municipal code requires that the applicant for development brings with them at the time of application, all the agreements he needs to get access. We're just talking about things. Now we're going to have emergency access going to Fire Box? I've got the letter from Michelle Rambo of Rubicon, talking about secondary emergency access all the way up to Fifth. Where is it going to be? It's not appropriate for this board at this time to approve these things until the applicant comes forward with those agreements. And the agreement from Mr. Lampa to wherever even emergency access would go, we need to have that, and that he would go along with having it be, meet the city requirements of emergency access, a minimum of six inches of a certain kind of aggregate covered with magnesium chloride. We don't have that. We don't know. But in any event, emergency access isn't going to satisfy the requirements of the code or what the people in the area want. The master plan is fine. This is the master plan. It calls for the connector all the way up to Fifth. A connection over to the school on emergency access doesn't give people in the development, or even me. I'm at the very end of the existing development. I have no access. The development we live in now wouldn't be built without secondary access. So now we're just going to pile on 30, 40, 112 more houses? It's not just me who's got a complaint about this thing. We circulated a petition to the whole community, existing people, and about 90% of the members or units in there signed the petition opposing this unless there was access. In color, this is the site map of the existing Lampa Ranch, or Lampa Development. Everyone marked in red objected to the proposal as set forth beforehand. This couple in here, they weren't there. Only two people refused to sign our petition, and not because they agreed with the plan. It was, well, they're going to do it anyway, kind of reasoning. The entire project should be sent back to the commission or actually canned unless two access points are provided for and we have reasonable assurances by signed agreements from the owner of the north pasture lot to provide that access. I have no further question, no further thing to say. Any questions?
Supervisor Bagwell has a question.
So if I'm looking at the actual agreement and understanding what you just communicated with us, so you would be acceptable is long, on page 3.4 or section 3.6, which discusses the roadways. Currently, it's the very end sentence that says the additional point of access may provide for emergency access only. If we struck that they could have emergency access, so it had to be public, then you would be satisfied. We could take off the emergency.
If we had pub, a second public access.
Public, okay. I just wanted to make sure I.
It would be fine with me. I strongly suggest it not lead to Fire Box because of the school congestion, and we were also hoping as a community, we wouldn't have the large construction trucks going up and down Railroad. And certainly, the school doesn't want large construction trucks coming in and out of the school area.
I think some of that, unless I'm mistaken, I think I heard them say they would work with you to the tentative map conditions on construction times and all that other, they said they'd meet with you before they even submitted the map, that they'd work with the residents for those details, because that happens at that level.
We'd certainly happy to meet with them. I would be, I can't speak for the whole development, but I'll be there.
Right, right. I'm just trying to, trying to help the residents out and find, but still find the right answer, which isn't always easy to do, I'll admit.
Well, two points of public access would eliminate almost all the problems that we have presented here before.
Thank you.
And Hope, just for, Hope, just again, has the staff done an analysis of creating a traffic analysis of the acceptability of the, call it Fire Box for lack of a better description, as to whether or not, if that were made, not an emergency access, but a permanent access, does it work from a traffic standpoint? Have you done that analysis?
The staff has not done a traffic analysis for the intersection of Fire Box and Solomon. Having said that, the engineering staff was not advocating that point of connection because the point, the intersection of Fire Box and Solomon versus the intersection of Fire Box and Railroad are so close to each other, they didn't believe that there would be a benefit from a traffic impact, or traffic analysis perspective to having that second permanent access.
So, so if that's the case, and you can't get, go to the north, you can only build 40 homes on this piece of property under their, or 31. Is that where we are?
No, where you are, where you are is what's on the board right now, which is 3.6C. And it was a challenge for staff, no doubt.
No, I got you where we are now, but I mean, but looking down the road, I mean, you already made the, and don't let me, I mean, I sincerely say, put words in your mouth. I'm trying, I get, I'm trying to, I get, I think I get where things are and what you're doing here. But if you've already made the decision, and the analysis that Fire Box doesn't work as a secondary access, and I assume there's something happening with the property owner, and I don't have any idea, but otherwise, there'd be a secondary access shown across that piece of property, then, then there's no solution to the enigma there, because they can't build more than 31 homes under the fire code on that piece of property. So they're not going to go develop that piece of property, if that's what, if that's where they are. I mean, they can't, because they can't get, unless they argue that, hey, they don't need a secondary access for 31, for more than 31, I don't know. All right, Mr. Schultz, you want to come in and?
Solve all the waters? Sure.
All right, all right, Darren.
Muddy the waters, I'll be happy to do that. Darren Schultz, for the record, the, so what's on the table is the traffic study that is, that has been performed. The data that we have today shows that this development, that the railroad intersection will function acceptably. What we're suggesting is if you connect the road to the north to Fire Box, it's going to move some of the traffic off of Railroad and up to Fire Box. But in terms of traffic study, that's not going to help much of the traffic report because the roads are close together. But that's, we're already on the record saying that in concept, we're okay with this, with this project moving forward, because what has been brought to us in terms of a traffic study, there's enough there to convince us that this is going to work. The final traffic study has to come in with the tentative map, and that's when we go through point by point by point, detail by detail. And if that doesn't get approved, then they can't build beyond the 40 homes.
Yeah, and then, you know, but from a development standpoint, that's a pretty big risk. And I guess, you know, I, believe me, you know, I, this property probably is, you know, is going to be developed at some point in time. And I agree with what Hope said, you know, development usually has to pay for these roads. The question is, you know, where's that road going to go? And I guess what you're telling me is, or telling us is, you'd be okay with Railroad serving an additional 100 and homes there, assuming the traffic study is okay.
Assuming the traffic study is okay, once it, once everything is said and done, exactly what it looks like, and a traffic study comes in and considers everything, that's, that's our job, yeah.
Even though the development code requires two accesses, you'd be willing to do that? The engineer would sign off and say, you only need one access to that piece of property?
Well, with, with, with the temporary, the fire access or a temporary access to the north, yes, we would, with one permanent. With the idea that this is, you know, this is working towards further, further development of that area. I mean, if you look at those subdivisions or those to the east, they all have roads that go to nowhere. I mean, and that's, that's what we're proposing today, is another road that goes to nowhere. So we, we understand that, and it's, it's a, it's a problem.
I don't know if you want to use that analogy, but that reminds me of that, that reminds me of that bridge to nowhere argument.
Which is now finished.
Finished, yeah.
So that's, that's how the development goes. So it's, it, this, this isn't a new thing, and this is, and I completely understand that the decisions you're faced with today, but we, from our perspective, we look at it just from a data perspective in terms of development, and that's how we move things forward. But that doesn't mean we're, we like it, we just look at the data.
So the mayor brings up a good point. He's referencing the intersection of King Street down in San Jose, the overpass to nowhere that stood there for 20, 25 years, which is now complete and a, and a functional intersection, which is kind of what we're talking about now. Maybe it's 10 years, 20 years in the future. The idea is to design it and plan it so that it can be connected in the future. Can you pull the, okay, you've got the, no, can you pull the SPA map up? I just want to go back to a point. So look at, where are we at? Okay, so Fire, Fire Box has always been intended to connect through, if you look at the map there, just as Railroad and Fifth Street. So I understand that Fire Box is not a perfect exit, but it's not intended to carry all the traffic. It's intended to be an alternate evacuation route or public access, so that for emergency access, or if a resident wants to go that way instead of out on Railroad, it's available. We're also including a trigger or cap on the number of homes that could be built without a permanent secondary access, which would either be Fire Box or Fifth Street. And that cap could be 31 homes or 41 homes, depending on the way the discussion goes today. So I understand what the concerns that have been brought up so far by the residents, but we're not talking about 112 cars all trying to get out on Railroad at the same time. The traffic would be, would be staged. The way the conversation, I hear it going, is that there would have to be a secondary public access from day one, whether that's to development standards or not, still remains to be determined. And additional traffic studies are required with every phase of every development in the Lampa Ranch SPA. So it's not that a developer can come in and do this traffic study that's in our packet and call it good. When they bring in a tentative map submittal for their first phase, they have to do an updated traffic study, and when they do phase two, they have to update it again, and when they do phase three, they have to update it again, so that they account for growth and what has been built. So I'm just listening to the conversation, and I think that there's a potential solution here. I don't want to make, I don't want to, I want to be careful how I say this. I hear the concerns. I think that there is a solution, if done right. I think that we're overemphasizing the traffic impacts based on 31, 41, or 112 homes. And so I want to make sure that we plan this right, but I also don't want to imply that we're talking about 100 or 200 cars per hour every hour of the day, because that's not the case. So I just want to be clear on what we're talking about and what the actual impact is, and how we, as a board, try to plan out into the future and still accommodate what needs to be done today to make sure that everybody in your neighborhood is safe.
Did I miss it then? You've already done a traffic analysis that shows you don't need another access other than Railroad. So that's what, are you shaking your, the traffic, I mean, that's, that's what you believe? One access. That's where, that's where he is. I mean, that's where they are, so.
Right, but mayor, that's not what we're discussing.
No, but that's where, but, but at the end of the day, if you're, if you're looking at planning things, and help, help me, Brad, here, if you're looking at, looking down the road and trying to plan things, they've already made the call that Railroad is the only access they need. And to a certain degree, I think Darren has already said, you know, they tend to agree with that. So, you know, we say, well, we'll do another traffic study as we get down the road. They've already made that call, and they've done it on the basis that, you know, where they've looked at the campus studies, they know what the traffic's going to be. I assume they factored in, you know, that school may expand and things of that nature, and that there's additional growth. But, so I, help me understand then, if that's the case, the decision we're being really asked to make here is one access with an emergency access for this, for 100 homes?
Yeah, I don't agree with that. I think what they're doing is that they're, what they're saying is that based on their data, Railroad by itself will handle the amount of traffic that would be generated by 112 homes. That's a statement. They're not dictating what requirements we're going to put on the development. We're saying that's one public access with an emergency access, from what I'm hearing amongst the discussion here, is not going to be acceptable. We have the right to put that condition on this, and then the developer has the right to make a decision on whether he wants to develop the property.
But at the zoning level, can we put a requirement on there that that property, this is zoning, not a tentative, not a map?
We, we would change the language into specific plan today, and then when the tentative map is submitted, we would condition the tentative map.
Again, if you think of the specific plan as the rules of the game, which is like what I keep saying, what are the rules of the game? We don't know them. You have a document in front of you, you're considering, are these good rules of the game or are they bad rules of the game? And you want to change the rules. Now's that time. If you, if the board believes there needs to be two points of access, just, that's it, two points of access, that's what our development standards say, that's what, it's consistent with the fire code. The piece of the specific plan, and it's the only piece we're talking about, it's a much larger document, is 3.6(c), which I have posted for you, and it's the second sentence is really what I think is the focus. And that second, the first sentence says you have to have two points of access, right? The second sentence says, provided the intersection of Solomon and Railroad meets the city standards of level service, the additional point of access may, may provide for emergency access only. I think that's, the sentence is the crux of our discussion, and whether or not that sentence stays as written, is entirely removed, which the default would be, you have two points of access, or if it's modified in some way. And I think that's where, that's where the planning commission discussion focused, and I hear that's where the board's discussion's focusing.
Lori?
So, just as a thought and carrying a little bit from something I heard Supervisor Bonkowski state earlier, we could say it has to be the two public points of access by removing, like you said, we could just remove the last sentence, but would we need to then add something indicating that the second public access doesn't have to be to full standards? Would that, would that need to be? I would think we need to put that in the document to give, to give them the authority to not put the curbs and gutters in. So I just want to put that option out on the table, that we'd make sure that people are aware, it'll be a public access for you, but you might not get the curbs and gutters until some future development comes in, but they would get a public access. So I just want to. So, I just want to clarify that, would we need to add that into the language?
If, if you wanted that to be a clear rule of the game, as I keep saying, certainly, and I, I can work on some language effect, 'cause keep in mind, if we do change that second sentence, we do go back to the Planning Commission. I would want to keep it relatively open, the language, so that at the time a tentative map, the details were worked out when we had the benefit of our city engineer having a chance to vet it.
And I just want to offer, and thank you for clarifying that. For myself, living in an area that only has one point of access, and having lived through an emergency scenario in that, with the one point of access, that's a scary thing. We're charged with the health, safety, and welfare of folks in terms of any development going forward. So, from my standpoint, having at least a public access that doesn't meet the complete city standards for construction is probably the best approach.
While we're taking additional public comment here, I'd like the applicant to, to think and have an answer to what your thoughts are on removing that last sentence on that section. Just, okay. Public comments? Wait, we'll, we'll do public comment first, too. Go ahead.
Jim Flegel, I live in the-
Hi, Jim.
-subdivision, I live on Caboose. I agree with everything that Lee said earlier. I just want to stress that it needs two points of access, and Jox is only 50 feet long before dumps on the trolley, which dumps on the railroad. So, Jox is not a secondary access.
I think that's what the staff said, they're not, they don't believe it.
Yeah, so, anyway, I just, I wanted to support Lee, that's why I came up here, 'cause he was sitting by himself, and I didn't want him to be alone up here. You know? So, anyway, I, I just, I just want to stress the second point of access.
You're, you're a good-
Thank you.
You're a good neighbor.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
There. Thank you. I'll start over. I'm Rick Riando, still, and I live on Railroad Drive. I've been there for almost 30 years. A couple of things, and I too agree with everything that Lee has said and with Jim. The transportation impact study for Blackstone Ranch, as prepared by Blackstone Development Group, has estimated the traffic on Railroad Drive throughout the whole day now, there's not a particular time. And this is on page nine of nine with this thing, says that there'll be 1,066 vehicular trips on the road in front of my house every day, if the Railroad Drive is the only access point. Okay, if you build, and I heard that the fire code said, before you build your 31st home, you have to have that second access. So, let's just roughly divide that 1,000 vehicular trips by a third, assuming that we're going to do 30 homes. So, I'm still gonna have 300 cars going past my house all day long? No, that's, that's written. And when I hear people talk about, "Well, we'll use the emergency access," that'll be the secondary access. In all of my experience, there's a cable or a gate or something that goes across the entrance to the emergency access, and it's locked, so that ambulance drivers and firetruck drivers, they can get through. And offering the residents of the 64 existing homes on Railroad, you, we'll give you the key or the code or something to get, you're gonna get out of your car to get up and go do that so that you can? No, you're gonna go back to Railroad. Emergency access is not a second access. A thousand cars? Imagine your street if you picked up 1,000 vehicular trips in front of your house every day. Okay, know this too, in talking with my neighbors about this, 'cause I, at first, when I learned of the 30 homes, and then the fire code kicks in, I started talking about that as a compromise. And I was sort of biased towards that, saying, "Okay, after the 31..." You know what my neighbor said? "Wait a minute, we relied on the city code, with the municipal code, and we relied on the master plan. You mean you can't trust our officials to stick to the rules that they've already established?" Oh, whoa, my God, I hadn't even thought of that. Yeah, there is, if that's the law, then let's follow the law. And if Mr. Lampa doesn't want to sell his property right away, then let's wait to build that residential area. And now, thank you for your patience, I'll be quiet and go away, unless you have questions.
No question, but just with respect to the, to the law issue, the second, the last sentence on that, on that-
Paragraph.
Paragraph up there is also the law.
"Provided the intersection of Solomon and Railroad meets the city standards of level of service." Does that meet the city standards of level of service?
I don't know, but that's the law. I mean, that's-
With 1,000 more cars?
That, that's what we're not, you know, we're not debating that today, but I mean, that's maybe what we should be, but I just, I'm not, I'm not suggesting one thing or another. I'm gonna ask the applicant to talk about that in a minute. But, I just want, I, I get where you're coming from, that, you know, normally, and I, and I think it's correct, the development requires two accesses, two public accesses. I get you on that.
Full access, though.
Yeah, yeah, not trying to argue with you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
And you guys have been great. I compliment you. I haven't gone through any of this kind of procedure before. All of you are really well organized and present yourselves exceptionally well. I'm grateful. You are my city supervisors. Thanks.
All right. All right. Any other, do you want to answer the question before we take further public comment? You're gonna do it. Go ahead now, that's fine. If, if you're ready to answer that question, what, what's your opinion? What are your thoughts on pulling that last sentence out of that code section or that development says, standard? What are your thoughts on that?
We, we would be in agreement to remove that and do a public, public access to a, to a lesser standard from day one.
Thank you, I think that-
And that, that was our concern, curb, gutter, sidewalk, all that, so, then, yeah.
Great public gesture. Thank you to the residents. Thank you.
I appreciate that as well, thank you.
Do you understand what that means?
He does.
If you take that sentence out, you're set, you're, you're building a full, you're built, you're, you're building out a secondary access.
Correct, to a, to a lesser standard. That, that, that's the critical part for us, is that lesser standard.
But it will be public.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, any other public comment?
I think that's a terrific concession by, by Blackstone, public access.
All right.
There you go.
All right, anybody else, any other public comment? We may have an, we may have an answer here, I don't know, you know? The infinite wisdom of the board here changes as wisdom moves on, so. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Thank you, guys. Yes, ma'am.
I will. Heidi Morales, I live at 1442 Trolley Way. I want to make sure I clearly understand what's gonna happen now. This now returns to the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Very good. And at that point in time, not only will the existing neighborhood that's directly impacted with the plan today, but will the Firebox people be notified as well?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause if they haven't, why wouldn't they? Because they're, if we're talking about the second public access, why wouldn't they be notified?
So, there, there's a right-of-way there, so they're connecting to a right-of-way. Let me, let me back up to just that, the notification requirement is a set requirement on the distance from the prop, subject property. This, this, this policy applies to the, the property in question at the end of Railroad, right? So, there's a distance based on size, I think it's 600 feet in this instance, it might, might be more than that, but whatever it is, we, we follow that, we stick to the letter of the law and, and notice around that. Per the, per the, our district attorney's advice in the past, it's, we do not go beyond that, we don't go less than that, we, we stick to that. And, yeah, and I don't want to, yes, you have the, please finish your comments. And so, to that, and as I was saying, there's, so there's a right-of-way there, it's, it's not otherwise affecting the public right-of-way, so we would not typically go beyond that notice.
And I understand your requirements, but I think in fairness to those people, they're now going to be impacted with exactly what we were impacted with. I, and I think that Fremont School needs to have a understanding of this new proposal as well. I don't think the school district will be very vocal, because I know that they're getting a school site from, up on the property to the north of Fifth, but I think that it, in all fairness, those individuals that are now going to be impacted should be notified. I understand your requirements, but I think in the, you are the board, and they are your people too, and I think that they should be contacted as well. I know that all of us in our neighborhood were not. I was, and I was grateful for that. It was the Planning Commission's meeting, but I was not notified at this meeting except for by Lee. I am in total agreement with everything. I am concerned about construction vehicles. I do want to see two permanent access points. I understand Mr. Lampa. I believe that if you couldn't, I wondered if the city would consider, I know he wants to ranch, I, I don't know about the remaining family members, but when I heard about the alternate access to Fifth Street, I immediately drew, drew a line through the middle of his remainder on the south side of Fifth. If the city would consider it, maybe he would be more willing to consider a permanent access point in temporary nature that could be vacated or abandoned in the future, closer to the western boundary of his property, so he could still have his cattle out there on the bigger piece of land, which would be then between the freeway and that roadway being pushed to the Fifth Street. I'm just, if the city would consider vacating and abandoning that when the future development came to the table, just an idea.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ideas are always welcome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to chime in-
Sorry, did I, did I step on something?
No, 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 absolutely not. I just wanted to clarify something for the record real quick. You know, something that Mr. Plumlet said a moment ago, I just wanted to be clear for the record that, you know, during the 2015 legislative session, there were certain changes made to statute with respect to, you know, historically what had been Dillon's rural state for Nevada, you know, it's now sort of a, a hybrid, you know, home rule or functional home rule state. What I mean by that is with respect to local governmental requirements, with respect to noticing and with the distance requirements, it has been the new policy or the position, legal position of the district attorney's office, that when you look at statutory noticing requirements that had, places a distance requirement, those distance requirements that are established via statute are a baseline or floor minimum. And so, I would say that, you know, Lee, for community development, you know, you're not restrained to go above and beyond that. I think that's within the purview of local government to do that. I'm not advocating that you must do that or you should do that, that's a policy call, and I'll leave that to the community development director.
You're saying legally, we can do that.
Yeah, it's legally fine to do that.
That's why learned hand is there. All right, all right.
There are about-
Come up, Mr. Harder, come on up.
We need to determine the number of homes. There are about seven houses on Firebox, and that's all, and I can assure you, they will all be notified. Do they send their comments to you, Hope?
Yes.
All right, all right. Tell you what, why don't we take a five or 10-minute break, think about this, and then we'll come back, and Solomon, the five Solomons will have to make a decision. All right, we'll be in research for 10 minutes. There are about seven houses on Firebox, and that's all, and I can assure you, they will all be notified. Do they send their comments to you, Hope?
Yes.
All right. Tell you what, why don't we take a five or 10 minute break, think about this, and then we'll come back, and Solomon, the five Solomons will have to make a decision. All right. We'll be in research for 10 minutes.
We're going to bring the meeting of the board to back to order. Okay. All right. I understand the planning said that you've got some potential language for.
Mayor.
I understand that there's some potential language that the planning folks would like us to take a look at. So Hope, why don't you give us that?
Thank you, Mayor. And recognizing that the board hasn't had a chance to talk, so I'm not 100% certain where you are, but based on the conversation prior to the break, you may want to replace the second sentence of 3.6C with wording to the effect of an additional access, I'm sorry, the additional access may meet standards different than the city standards. If it is deemed, the access will be temporary in nature. Recognizing permanent roads constructed to city standards will be constructed at the time the property to the north of the Linear Park is developed. So I don't know if that captures the feelings of the majority, but it was part of the discussion, so I just put it out there. Thank you.
I have one question, based on that language. Would that allow the entire potentially proposed 112 homes to be built prior to that secondary public access being built to full development standards?
Correct. It would be built to a standard other than the city standard. And then when property to the north of the Linear Park was developed, those roads, permanent roads would be improved, per this language. That's not to say that's what you all agree with.
Well, I guess my concern with that is, does that mean that if the property to the north is not developed, that we could end up with a temporary, permanent public access?
Right. And actually, your question leads to the concerns that Dan Stuckey had, because it's the timing of a road built to a standard less than the city standard turns into a maintenance nightmare, depending on how long that road has to function, and then questions about who would maintain that road, and what's the construction, and so on and so forth. So you may want to consider a time element to that, or we, five years, or I'm just saying.
Mike, can you come up, Mike? Please. So I think in your original presentation this morning, you had indicated that the, that the fully improved public access to current development standards would be built at the 41st home?
That's correct.
So is there an objection to keeping that?
Oh, temporary. No.
Yes. So I'm not asking for any change in what you had originally proposed, that at some point, we have to have a trigger that makes that subgrade, substandard public access a standard public access.
And as we had proposed this morning, the emergency access was not a, it was a, you know, compacted, all-weather surface type road, and we had talked about paving that and doing it to basically the standard we're talking about now upon the 41st unit. I think from a, you know, financial perspective, if we could have just a couple minutes to see what we think, if that is feasible to do a fully improved curb gutter sidewalk at the 41st unit, whether that works for us or not.
Or at what unit?
Yeah, exactly.
But there has to be a trigger, because I don't want to be looking.
You don't want to be left, no, I definitely understand the concern, so if we could have just a minute to convene and, all right.
All right.
Maybe a potential solution, Mike, would be to, if it isn't constructed by the 112th home that the performance bond has put up to guarantee that construction of that would be done.
If that's acceptable to the board, I think that's a perfect solution.
All right, just so that we're not on the hook down the road.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. So Board, what I'm hearing is that we want to change, and I don't know the Hope's language, you know, she's doing it by the back of a napkin.
(laughing).
Well, that's all right. I mean, you know, never let it be forgotten that the Blackbird supersonic jet was done on the back of a napkin, the design was, in a bar.
See? So we're good.
Drinking and flying, were we?
Drinking and flying. Anyway, but, so I think, Board, where we are, and somebody's going to have to make a motion of this effect, that, you know, in plain language terms, there'll be a second, a temporary secondary public access before a home is built, and that will be on Firebox.
I don't think we should say where.
Where, that's fine.
Don't say where.
Don't say where.
Just a requirement.
Just a requirement. It has to be built so that there will be some traffic relief when it's being constructed, and that at a certain point in time, 41 homes or 31, whatever the board wants to do, that when the tentative map comes, that at 31 homes, there has to be a fully approved develop, a secondary access that is, meets current city code for roads.
I believe what we just changed that, too, is that it would have to be constructed by the 112th home, or a performance bond would have to be put up.
Completion of their project.
Wait a minute.
Completion of their own project.
Can I, if I can clarify, what I think we're thinking is that upon construction of the very first home, there needs to be two public accesses, one of which can be built to a lesser standard, and that upon completion of the 112th home, that access must be improved to a full city standard.
Or a performance.
Or a performance bond to put up to ensure the completion.
I think maybe instead of saying 112, because the final one might come in at 110, so can we just say whatever their final, when they're done with their project, they've got to bring it up to the full, like you said, curbs and gutters.
Based on the completion of construction at the final phase.
There you go. I like that.
Because we don't have a project, so we don't know what the number of homes is.
Right. So let's use final phase. I can look at that.
All right. We're on, let's take a, we know, I think we know we're going on both 13 13A and B, not certain. Hope, you're going to have to help us. I suspect that if we make a motion, we do it first on a master plan?
Yes, that would be necessary, because you need that for the zoning to be in compliance with the master plan.
All right. So let's try, let's try a motion on 13A and see where we go.
I'll give this a shot. I move to approve a master plan amendment to create a new specific plan area, Blackstone Ranch specific plan, for 26.89 acres of existing Lampa Ranch specific plan area located at the east end of Railroad Drive and west of Interstate 580, APN 010051-44, subject to the incorporation of the modified language of 3.1.2B, 3.1.2C, 3.6C, and direct staff to review the design guidelines to codify the discussion and direction amongst the Board here today for compliance throughout the document. And do I need to include language about the different things we agreed to, the performance bond?
If you want to reference your discussion, because we need to take it back to the Planning Commission, then it comes back to you anyway.
Great.
For final action.
So incorporating the discussion amongst the Board today in order to take it back to the Planning Commission for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I did.
Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to speak briefly, because at this point, I am not going to support this motion. It's not that I'm anti-development, as a matter of fact, I ran as a pro-development person, or at least a reasonable-growth person. It's not that I have any problem with the developer. I do have some questions about the traffic study, I'd like to see us do our own at some point, but be that as it may, and it's certainly not a criticism of our Planning Commission or our Planning Department or our Committee of the Development Department, which concludes planning. I think you've all done wonderful work, I think the Board has done wonderful work, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to be in the minority up here, although I'm just guessing at this point. I have harped since I began to run, and I've harped ever since, on something I'm probably not going to get done in my first four years in office, and that is the need to redo a full community input master plan update. I don't like this, doing the master plan as we decide at any given time it ought to be done, making exceptions, playing, I look upon it as a mini-Constitution. I know it's not, I know people don't see it that way in planning, but this, as has been pointed out in this discussion, is what people rely on, that and our ordinances, which are on the books. Now, it looks like we've reached a good solution, and at the time that it comes back from the Planning Commission, I probably will change my position, but at this point, just to make that point, I will be voting no on this and the subsequent one. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Discussion's in order.
General comment, both for the public and the developer. It's really a pleasure to work with all of you, too. I know we have to make decisions up here sometimes that are really tough, but I really enjoyed today, because I think it was both the community of the residents and the developer really coming together. Not everyone's excited or super happy, but it means we did a good job, because everybody can live with it, so thank all of you, too. It's important.
And I'd just like to comment, thank you for working with us on this. I think the traffic study doesn't include the construction impact as we go forward on this project, and considering the fact that we have a school in that neighborhood, and how that would directly be affected, and the safety and welfare of our community members affected, I think this was a reasonable solution, so I appreciate it.
All right. Further discussion? All right, on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes 401. All right, on the zoning one, this is pro forma now, it looks like, take a motion for that one.
Are we going to, Mr. Mayor, are we going to discuss the letter?
Yeah.
Portion on that?
Yeah.
Of whether or not we want to, because they asked for a tax deferment, do we just want to not support that and say it's when you aren't using it in agricultural status, that's when the taxes do?
Yeah, I'm not certain we have to reinvent the wheel on that one.
Right.
I think what...
We just go with our motion and not the letter?
I think, because we're not changing the law on when the abatement ends or repayment, so I think if you're silent on that, existing law stands. Mr. Dolly, you agree with that?
Yeah, sure.
I know you were. Well, you know, we all got to get in the soup now and then.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dave Dolly. NRS 36018 does convolutedly say that 1A is that the agricultural taxes do become due upon a change of the zoning at the higher use at the request of the owner. However, Section 2 does say that this section does not apply to the portion of the parcel that continues to qualify for ag. So I don't think that the letter that Mr. Lampa did submit has any bearing on the actual law itself, because as long as it stays in ag, then the taxes would not be due.
So that brings up the loop, the southwest loop inside the second public access to Firebox, that's part of the North Lampa piece, that would no longer be used for agricultural purposes. So do you have an ability to segregate a portion of a parcel? And, I mean, how would you view that?
This is the first time that that's even being, you know, this is first we're hearing about it, is at this meeting, so...
But if we're silent, I mean, I agree, I understand what Supervisor Bunkowski's saying, and not that we don't want to give it short, not to give it short shrift, but if we're just silent on it, what you just read, the law is going to stay in place.
Correct.
Pardon me?
I believe the area that Mr. Bunkows, or Supervisor Bunkowski just spoke to is not subject to the zoning map amendment, it's a different piece of property. And so what you have before you is a zoning map amendment for the 27 acres, if you will, and that connection to Firebox is a different parcel, it's a different APN, it's to the north, and we don't even know that will be where the connection is.
But, if I might, whatever portion is actually used, would be taken out of ag, because it's not used as ag anymore.
Thank you, Dave. All right, all right. Is there public comment? I think everybody knows where we're going. All right. Motion's in order.
Bill number?
111.
I move to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 111, an ordinance approving a change of zoning from agriculture to single-family 6,000 on property located on the east end of Railroad Drive and west of Interstate 580, assessor's parcel number 010-051-44.
There's a motion and a second, on the motion discussion, hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
John? Any abstentions? I don't get a list on here, so, motion passes 401. All right. Anything further on either one of these? I don't see any. Thank you very much, folks, you're welcome to sit around and listen to the rest of the day here. All right. All right. Let's take up 13, Charlie.
Bob, I'm just going to clarify, because I couldn't participate last night, because my daughter was teaching.
No, you can.
Now I can.
Yeah. Did she marry the fireman? Did she get married?
No, they're living together.
All right. All right. You didn't hear that on the record.
Gossip.
All right, let's take up item 13, Charlie. You're there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a disclosure first before we go, and so let me just put on the record what this is, then the disclosures in order. This is a report from Jessica Daniels, Executive Director of the Carson Montessori School, providing a one-year update on efforts to relocate the school, and everybody knows what we're talking about there, so disclosures in order.
I just want to state for the record that on July 20, 2017, when this was first heard, I had to recuse myself and abstain from voting in this matter, because my daughter was a teacher at Carson Montessori. My daughter is no longer a teacher at Carson Montessori, so I will not have any reason to abstain or recuse myself.
All right, any other comments or disclosures? All right, Jessica, who's going to, Hope, you're going to introduce this?
Just real quick introductory comments, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Daniels.
Jessica, you can sit at the table right up here. Come on.
She's going to do a PowerPoint from here.
Oh, you got a PowerPoint. Sit over there, that's fine.
So on July 20, 2017, the Board of Supervisors approved miscellaneous 17057 to allow expansion of a non-conforming use of school. In making this approval, the Board requested the applicant provide an update in one year relative to the school's efforts to relocate the school. This item is for presentation only, and Jessica Daniels, the principal, is present to present to the supervisors.
She brought the techie.
Good morning, Ms. Daniels. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
And we have the letter from Superintendent Stokes in front of us.
Oh, good, okay.
All right.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Jessica Barlow Daniels, and I am the Executive Director, Principal for Carson Montessori, a real-world, hands-on, public charter school that is sponsored by the Carson City School District. I'm here today to fulfill a requirement that was attached to the issuing of our two-year special use permit, and I've actually really been looking forward to this opportunity to share with the Board of Supervisors this recap of our school year and our continuing quest to find a new site for Carson Montessori. It's exciting to be part of a community that has rapid growth and change and development. I feel that the future of Carson City is alive, and it is thriving, and I feel that Carson Montessori has many amenities to enhance that future. I'm hoping that today we can just have a very positive conversation that will benefit all of the parties involved. I want you to notice that I came here alone. There's no student legislative team that usually, because we're a hands-on school, does our presentations. I didn't pack the house full of Montessori families, and I didn't bring my attorney. I do have to admit, though, that I really miss one of Carson City's staunchest educational supporter. An individual who sat next to me at the meetings and negotiations that somehow, in spite of our tireless efforts, have still not come to fruition in finding a new site. That educational ambassador was the late Pete Livermore. His support for education and for Carson Montessori and the youth and future of the Carson City community could not have been stronger. Pete believed that it takes dedicated citizens working together to build a wholesome community, and that's actually why I'm here today, because I'm going to need your help. I can't do it alone. I'd like to give you a little background on our search for a new site to this point. I don't want this to be a one-way conversation, so if you have any questions or comments, please just let me hear it, just jump right in. Currently, it seems that Carson City has building projects everywhere you look. Two of the more significant projects are the Lampa Project, which just preceded us, and the mixed-use housing project on Curry Street. Both of these sites were originally interest points for Carson Montessori School. I think you probably are not aware of the fact that with the Lampa property, the developer initially offered Carson Montessori the option to purchase for a very, very significant price those acres that have since been dedicated for a school site for the Carson City School District, but it was offered to us first. Part of the ideal, and the deal included Carson Montessori running that infrastructure to and through our site, so what you have just been discussing was part of that deal that was offered to us, and we would have been responsible for running all the curbs and gutters and infrastructure that would have been there.
So, Jessica, you raised that issue to say...
I just want you to see that we've been...
That you would have or would not have acquired it? I mean, it was offered to you, but...
It was way, the price, Bob, was way, yep, was way out of our means. And when they came to approach us with the offer, I asked them, what am I bringing to your table? You don't come to a little, small school in the middle of nowhere if I don't have something to offer to you. And it was the fact that, you know, I would be responsible for that road that was going to be cut in, and I just didn't have that kind of money to purchase the land, because they wanted me to buy it, they didn't want to give it to me.
I got it, thank you.
The second one is on Curry Street, the old Citibank Building, and we did a very thorough investigation on that, and it was determined, first of all, that it was not big enough for us, and secondly, that we would have created a massive traffic problem on Curry Street. So at that time, the owner absolutely did not want to sell it to us either. I can stand on the corner of Coons Lane at the Toyota dealership, and I know that these, you really can't see them, they're so small, that, at the Toyota dealership, and I can look down to Fairview Drive, and I can count nine different locations that we considered for a school site by the time I reached Fairview Drive. It isn't that we haven't been diligently looking. We were ready at one point, actually, to move into the Greater Nevada Credit Union on Silver Sage, and then they changed their mind, and as you know, they have built a new structure on their property and kept the main office site also. And then, of course, there's always the expression that I get daily, it seems, well, what about Kmart? Did you ever think about Kmart? Here's the deal with Kmart. Just like with the codes that don't allow us to be in a light industrial area, they specifically exclude a school, the lease on the Kmart building specifically forbids and excludes a school. So there's no way that I could locate there if I even wanted to. This last year, our bus, the wheels on that bus, did take us the world round. It was a challenge to actually get the special use permit, but we're excited, because it presented us with opportunities that we were able to extend our partnership with Western Nevada Community College, or Western Nevada College, and the Children's Museum. It took us seven months to actually get the permit of occupancy. However, we used that time to have our students explore and use the amenities that our Carson City community has to offer, and that bus daily took those students on learning adventures every single day. And the Community College, being the partner that they are, gave us space, and also the Children's Museum. We had to do internal upgrades in changing from a B to an E, educational rating, which we will have to do no matter where we are, and it's much more intense in building, an educational building, than just opening an office or setting up a business. To address the concerns that the Board initially brought up on safety, we formed a safety squad, including teachers. We actually have a safety individual at our school. I stole her from the Department of Public Safety, I took their top investigator and brought her over, and we have a student patrol. We put in crosswalks, safety barricades... We put in crosswalks, safety barricades, and a wonderful "Watch for Happy Children" sign. We had to double-sheet rock the walls, put in the fire alarms that I insisted on, and we actually had 11 fire inspections. Where are we on our way to finding that new site? We have settled on using a clear-span metal building if we should build, and this footprint example is actually three metal buildings put together. It is the most cost-effective because we are a wide-open environment, and so we need a clear-span building. It's also much more cost-effective than the outside would be embellished to match the surrounding environment. On August 3rd of last year, we had a meeting with Western Nevada College to review the recommendation we had been working with them all along that was being submitted by the Acting President, Mark Gahn, to the Board of Regents. It included a partnership between Western Nevada College and their Early Childhood Development Center and Carson Montessori. Because we're all political subdivisions of the state of Nevada, Western Nevada College and Carson Montessori and the Carson City School District, we are all the same entity. The college has seven acres. This partnership would include the two sites linked together with a common center in the middle that would also be used for events and Carson Montessori's culinary program. So it would have a fully-equipped kitchen and be able to do events that would accommodate probably 200 people. So, to the community of Carson, it would give another small event center, but for wedding receptions, those kinds of things, to which Western Nevada College, if they chose to choose, charge a fee, could do that. Everything was running very, very smoothly. We had met with the developer, we met with the engineers, they had come and taken measurements. We, this did have to be approved by the Board of Regents. They had seen the recommendation, they knew the master plan proposal with the two sites being linked together, and the developer actually came out of Phoenix. He is who did the Elko Event Center. The way they're building buildings now on college campuses is you bring in an outside developer, they build the building, they fund it through private funding, they get investors to do it, and then you lease it back from them. So this was already set up with Western Nevada College. The developer was thrilled to have a Montessori school that could tie on to the other end. He said it was the perfect marriage, and they continued to move forward. Then it came to our charter renewal, which is up for renewal in 2019, and he wanted to know if, we're sponsored by the school district, if the school district would renew it. What you might not be aware of with charters is they're no longer allowing school districts to sponsor charter schools. They're all run under the state, and they're hoping to get all the charter schools under one umbrella, one entity, and form the 18th School District for the State of Nevada. I love being part of the Carson City School District. We work beautifully together. We have accomplished much, many things, and I do not want to be forced to have to go under the state. The school district assured me and gave me the criteria that we could renew it early, we could do whatever needed to be done to bring this deal at WNC to fruition. And then I was very honest, as I always am, and I explained Nevada law. Charters run on a six-year cycle. That's NRS. And it was as though, as though the air had been sucked right out of the room. It went silent. They needed from me a 30-year guarantee. Now, your colleges aren't going anywhere. They may close a building, open a new one. Their enrollment may fluctuate, but their entity itself is not going anywhere. The Carson City School District as an entity is not going anywhere. But charter schools, as you all know, can be here today and gone tomorrow. They run and operate exclusively on a six-year cycle. You cannot renew a charter for any longer than six years. The partnership is not dead. We're still working with the new president. However, it has really hit a major, major roadblock that is completely out of my control, and I'm not sure that, the developer became very dubious and, and wasn't sure he could get the financial backing when it's on such a limited amount of time. So, we have picked ourselves up, dusted ourselves off, left that deal on the table, and we went back and visited areas that we had gone to before. So, as you see up there, Silver State Charter School, we were included on every site. When Steve Knight was looking for a site for Silver State, we were included on the plans on every single site he looked at, including the current one where they are located now. There was not enough room for us to build on that vacant lot, which, as you are aware, just sold. The Mallory Building and the vacant lot just sold. Silver State Charter School, I believe, also has a buyer, and they're not sure that that buyer would be willing to lease to me. Also, the amount, they want an 8% return on their money, and that doubles the rent that I'm already paying, which puts a financial hardship on the school. The second site is the bypass, and that is that 10 acres that we have been working with Carson City and partnered with Carson Recreation for years, and Paul Salsita from the Nevada Department of Transportation. We've gone back on the table with that. That complete subdivision now is built out, so now there's houses all around that vacant piece of land, and there is a possible restriction that a permanent structure cannot be put on it. Parks and Rec can use it for fields. We would not be able to put a school on it. Capital Christian has approached us, so we are looking at their site also. It definitely is not the best solution, but we will not leave any stone unturned. And then Stewart. We would love to partner with Stewart, and they would love to include us on their master plan. However, as we just recently saw with the dedication of the first phase of it, it's years and years out before there would be any opportunity for a facility at Stewart. So, Carson City once had a dream too. They had a dream for their library. And Carson Montessori was poised to take over, what you might not realize, the existing building where the library is housed today. But many times, even the best dreams do not come to fruition, and you have to be flexible and you have to make adjustments. Superintendent Richard Stokes, Carson Montessori's Partner in Education, has made it clear in his letter dated July 31st, of which you said you all have a copy of it, that if Carson Montessori School is unable to find a suitable location in which to operate, and if the school is forced to close, 284 students will return to the Carson City School District. Assimilating 284 additional students into the district's present infrastructure will significantly impact our elementary and middle school operations. Carson City Schools are currently operating at full capacity. Its Superintendent Stokes hopes that with the assistance of all of us, the schools in our community can continue to serve students as they have in the past and continue to be as what was just brought out in your last joint meeting, that you had hubs of wonderful things that are happening in the Carson City community in education, and he asked for your support. It may appear that perhaps I've been a little too picky and I set unrealistic goals in trying to find a site, but I have an obligation to the students, their families, my staff, and to this community. I think I've already proven that even the most unrealistic goals can be achieved, and for me, it doesn't matter the setting. I'm committed and I'm willing to roll up my sleeves, jump in, and transform any setting into a flourishing educational gym that fosters the ultimate learning experience, but I can't do it alone. I really need your help, and I'm so grateful for all the help and the chance and the opportunity that you gave me in granting us some time, but we're gonna have to work together as a community for the good of our future. Nelson Mandela said, "It always seems impossible until it's done," and Carson Montessori made that clear this past year, that it was kind of fun to do the impossible, because if you can dream it, you can do it. I'm just really asking you to help us to accomplish our, our dream. You've been wonderful, I'm so grateful for, for what you've given us, but it really does take time. It really does take time. And, in all honesty, I have a year left, and if I can't find a site, you'll see me back here in May begging you to, to help us in, in what we need to do, but it certainly hasn't been from negligence on anyone's part to maintain and sustain Carson Montessori.
Jessica, just a question on the college's-
Yes.
Would the college allow you to build your own building on their property?
Initially, that's where it was set up, and that's what it was, and then when they came up with this plan, you know, to unite us and tie us together, because the way they were presenting it was as the package deal, I'm not sure. I certainly will bring that up. I, I mean, because we're not gonna let, that, that is our dream site, and it makes total sense to have all these educational things united.
So, the, so I'm clear. The developer wants a 30-year guarantee, that's the crux of all of this, for financing.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you, I mean, have you talked, I mean, we deal with these, what we call three Ps all the time. If you talk to them about, you know, maybe less in the lease period with a, with a greater downstroke in the building?
Uh, yes. And they also, well, they indicated to us, because they are the developer who was chosen by WNC. So, it kind of that seven acres, because originally, this is the third time we've gone to the negotiations table with WNC. Originally, I think we were negotiating with them before they even put the ball fields in, and they said they wanted to save and reserve that area for the ball fields, and then they put their solar panels in, because we looked at the property back behind. We've been working with WNC, I want to say, for 10 years, and so it was suggested to us to go back to them again, and I said, "Well, I've been to them several times," and they said, "No, go back to them again." And so then Mark reached out to us, and at that point, he was just still in his vice-president position, and-
I have a, I have a meeting set up with Mr. Solis. I think I'll talk to him about-
Okay, okay, because we have not met with him yet, because as you realize, he just arrived, and I know that he's getting acclimated to the community, and I would, I would so appreciate that.
I can, I think I can tell him, you know, what Montessori did.
Okay.
I, I can't negotiate a transaction, but I can tell him what, what the school does and what it makes this community.
Thank you, and, and that it's been and still is on the table, because they did not take it off the table. It, it is still there.
Well, and my thought process too on this is, and as Richard Stokes explained in his letter and his support of, and as you said, the Carson City School District is not going anywhere.
No.
I mean, in some way, shape, or form, I think, I know your charter can only be renewed every six years, but in some way, shape, or form, I think this can be worked through. It would, it just seems logical to me.
Mm-hmm.
Just a, a question because of the 30 years, so maybe even going back to Mr. Stokes. Let's, let's say you had 284 students on the property there, would not the school district, if they had to take over the 284 students that got, couldn't they then be a backup signatory to that site, so you would have a 30-year guarantee?
I asked them that.
Because they have to take those students.
And they, right, right, because I, the simple question was if, if the school-
Right.
Heaven forbid, should ever fold or-
Couldn't get a charter.
Couldn't get a charter, you know, there they are in a beautiful new building, wouldn't the district want that building?
Right.
And I was stunned, because I really thought they'd say, "Yeah, no problem." But apparently, I don't know if it's a legal issue or what, but they said if the building was built right now today, they'd be happy to jump in and take it, because they need another elementary school. But he said, you know, I, I don't know, perhaps I needed to rephrase it to them, and perhaps I need to, and I've, I've met with the Board, I, I meet with them quite a bit at their strategic planning meetings, and I, I will go back and rephrase that.
And, I don't know, can you put, can, can a charter school and, and the regular school be co-located on a-
Yes.
-site?
Yes.
So-
Yes.
Maybe, maybe I could just even make another-
And he's willing to, he's willing to do that, I think, but-
And then they could take the whole building and lease, or you're gonna make your share of the payment or whatever. I don't know, I would think something could be worked out there, because the school district needs the school too. Just a thought.
Mm-hmm. Thank you again for, for giving us, though, a chance and giving us an opportunity. I'm so grateful to you, because you could have just said a year ago, "That's it." So, and as you can see, I wouldn't have had any place to go. We joked about pitching tents, and I offered to at Stewart that if I could be truly hands-on, real-world, realistic, I could put them in Wiki-Ups and... So, we've had some good laughs and some good times about it, but thank you, thank you so much for what you've done.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, any other questions, Jessica? All right, public comment on this issue? Anybody wanna weigh in? I don't see anybody, Jessica, thank you. Continue to march. I'll call you after I meet with Solis.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't know, you know, I've, I've never met the guy before, but I understand he's a pretty thoughtful individual.
That's what we've been led to. Very open, it seems.
All right, let's now take up, uh, 13 Fox Truck. I'll get you guys there one of these days.
We don't go much past Bravo.
We'll go up to, move to 13 F. This is to approve a request for historical tax deferment on a property located within the historic district at 408 West Robinson Street. That's the old Bliss Bungalow. What's the downside to doing it?
No downside, Mayor. The property's subject to a deferment right now. The request is due to a change of ownership. The request is due to a change of ownership. On July 12, 2018, the HRC reviewed the request and recommended approval.
Okay. We'll take a motion, but in a minute here. But what's going on with the house next door there?
The one with the weeds, and it looks a bit rundown. Yeah. My understanding is it's an elderly resident, and the family is involved, but it is a problem. I think our code enforcement's looking at the weeds over there. But I know the house, and it is, it's not being kept up like the rest of the district.
Well, if code enforcement wants the title of the mayor to come with them or talk to them, I'd be happy to do that to the relatives. Okay? All right. Public comment on this issue? Motion's in order.
I move to approve a request for an historical tax deferment on property located within the historic district located at 408 West Robinson Street, APN 003236-01.
There's a motion and a second on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have mine? Must have clicked off here.
Too fast on the -- yeah.
I clicked off some, huh? Okay. Motion passes. All right. Let's take up the change in the development standard ordinance on signs. This is 13G. Mr. Plummel, you going to do this?
Yes. Thank you for the record lead, Plummel. Community Development. This is for action to introduce an ordinance on first reading regarding Title 18 Division 4 signs, particularly related to temporary sign devices. First of all, I'd like to start off for this discussion. I did send out a PDF earlier with a packet, because if you're looking, if you're using the Granicus packet, Granicus accepted all the tract changes, so if I have copies up here, if anybody needs a PDF with the, that shows the revisions, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll proceed. So back earlier this year, we had some discussion with the Board of Supervisors based on some concerns with some businesses about signs, A-frame signs, flags, banners, et cetera, and got some direction, and we went back to the Planning Commission. So we made some proposals to the Planning Commission based on that discussion and based on quite a bit of discussion and good discussion with the Planning Commission. We've come up with some recommendations to bring back to you, primarily talking about flags, including the flags you may attach to the building and freestanding flags, A-frame signs, banners that are attached to buildings, and other inflatable devices. So up on the screen there, I have kind of a summary regarding those of what the current standards are, what the proposed ordinance would make for those standards, and then some other little bit of discussion that's in the staff report on what some other alternatives that were considered and at least discussed by the Planning Commission. So starting with flags, and flags and these feather flags really turned out to be the focus of a lot of the discussion and really took up most of the discussion, the time, about what to do with freestanding flags. I know even amongst the Board of Supervisors, when there was original discussion, I think the opinions varied from some additional regulations to banning them altogether. So up on the matrix there that I have up there, I've broken it out. We have flags that people attach to buildings that sometimes decorative or in their back. And I don't think those aren't, we have current regulations for those. Currently, they can be attached to the building. There's a limit on the number, there's a limit on the size. Not proposing any change of those. Those haven't been a problem, we don't think. Those are the focus of the concerns and issues that we've seen. But what we've seen is a proliferation of the freestanding flags, which under current regulations, you can have for up to 30 consecutive days in any 90-day period. That's what it states in the code today. And it just says "flags," and the flags, when they're attached to building, can be permanent, but there's, for freestanding flags, there's actually no limit in there currently, so it is appropriate to properly put some regulations in there for those now, one way or another. The recommendation, there was a lot of discussion, and in fact, the recommendation, as it came from staff, was to allow them, similar to A-frame signs, and in fact, regulate them the same as those, which would only be to not have them along the street frontage, to allow them only in front of, within 20 feet of the businesses. However, after some discussion, the recommendation of the Planning Commission was to effectively eliminate allowing freestanding flags except for with special event permits. So we have special, if you are having a special event, and they brought up like the downtown, the Taste of, no, the Wine Walk, where they're used on the weekend, before the Wine Walk, that's part of a special event, that that would be an example of when you could use those. Otherwise, freestanding flags should just not be allowed. And as I have up there, as I mentioned, there was discussion about regulating them like A-frame signs, alternatively, which would be to allow them without time limits within a certain area. So there was some discussion about whether that's within 20 feet of the building, or perhaps it's at least 20 feet back from the back of sidewalk. That was kind of the discussion that the Planning Commission had on both A-frame signs and freestanding flags. Let me go through this real quick, and then we'll just take the discussion altogether. So moving to the next one, A-frame signs. Again, right now, they're actually prohibited everywhere in the city except for the downtown. So as kind of the direction was, well, let's make the regulations similar for all businesses in our, all commercial businesses, which would work for the downtown if the proposed regulation, we can allow them anywhere as long as they're within 20 feet of the entrance. For the downtown, that works for what they do now. For other shopping centers, it would be intended then as, it would maintain that pedestrian orientation for the people, once they've gotten out of their cars, to kind of see what's going on within a shopping center. And again, the recommendation is 20 feet from a business entrance. The alternatives that were considered but not opted for was to have, say, 20 feet behind the sidewalk, so they're not out on the street, distraction to drivers, but that was another alternative considered. For banners, there was not a lot of discussion, other than that we need to do better enforcement, because we've seen banners up for a long time, not meeting that 30-day and 80-day period. With our new code enforcement officers coming on at the start of this year, they're now in kind of their second month, so you should, over the last month, see a lot of the banners have come down that have been up for a long time and other signs. I think, in fact, one of the officers is going out again today to follow up on some others. So that's always an ongoing thing. It gets better as you get consistent enforcement and the businesses get the rules, we get more voluntary compliance, so that will, that should get better over time, but we're still working on that. And like I said, it'd be ongoing enforcement issues, and no changes are recommended to those standards. And then with inflatable devices, again, there was, it was discussed a little bit at the Planning Commission, and they felt that the current limitation of three days within any 90-day period is adequate as long as it's enforced. It clearly has not been consistently enforced in the past. But again, I think if you go out there now, you've seen some devices you've seen in the past, should be gone now, and the code enforcement officers are out there on that issue. And I'll just mention at this point Supervisor Bonkowski had some discussion, had some questions, and it got me thinking about it. The Planning Commission really didn't get into it, but like, you know, something that the Planning Commission didn't consider, but if I thought about it, maybe would have recommended, like with the freestanding flags and those other devices, perhaps inflatable devices, could be only with a special event permit. The three days is a little bit problematic, because the code enforcement officers don't do a citywide sweep every three days to catch them just for that. They are now on a program of doing it every 30 days. It's a reasonable period with the banners and in terms of workload to every 30 days do a complete sweep. But the, so for inflatable devices, there's not a lot of them, and I'm not saying it's really a problem, but they would have to basically catch them in their general activities going around for other things. But that's a summary of the proposed changes and things that were discussed, and I'd be happy to answer questions at this point.
Questions, Ali.
Right. As Lee mentioned, we had some discussions prior to the meeting. When this came in front of the board previously, I had expressed my preference that flags and banners be allowed to one frontage rather than per frontage with a limit of two. That did not get changed by the Planning Commission, but I would stand by that recommendation, that flags and banners, you could have one per storefront and not one per frontage with a limit of two. And then I would agree with Lee that it makes more sense on the inflatables that they're permitted only with a special events permit. Other than that, I think those are the only changes that I would like to see.
Supervisor Barrett.
Well, again, I'm in, put in the position of saying I'm not anti-business, but my feelings regarding this have no, well, it doesn't matter what my feelings are, but I believe that any businessperson who thinks that the cutting edge between success and failure has to do with their signage is kidding himself or herself. I don't like what's come back to us, and I would agree that it would be a good idea. I'd like to get rid of the inflatables completely, completely. And I don't like the feather signs, so I agree with Brad, that maybe one is fine. And I don't like the A-frame signs. I think that people are just leaning on that, and they think it's making a difference. I don't think it is. Maybe they are right. Maybe I am wrong. But of course, I never question my efficacy regarding whether I'm wrong or not, except to say it out loud. So I'm going to have a problem with this unless we change it.
All right. Let's see where we go. Then, Lori.
So I don't mind your ideas on the inflatable, but I'm trying to understand your rationale. So if I were on the per frontage a sign, so first of all, all businesses, locations within the malls, locations for street access, any signage whatsoever, not all are created equal. We just approved a huge change to all of our rules for the Mountain Street project to allow for the frontages and the sides of the road, so they could put signs so that people could see 101 Mountain Street. So to pretend that a sign does not help a business, it depends on the location of the business. So if you were to look at the Frontier Plaza, so you've got Butler Meats and the people that can be seen from Main Street, right? They can be seen. But if you're looking at the sides or things, I don't understand. I think what's wrong with the frontage, it's attached to their building, so why can't they have a sign on each side of their building? I'm missing something. Why not?
Are you asking?
Why don't you want to let them have one on each side? I'm trying to understand the rationale for saying you can only pick one side of your building.
If I might, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, excuse me.
So a business has its permanent signage. I don't have an issue with that. You can have permanent signage on more than one frontage. We're not discussing that. What we're discussing is temporary banners and flags. And what we have seen in reality is that banners get put up, and then they get changed, but they stay in the same location. So all you have to do as a business is put one up for 30 days, 30 days later, change it out, and now it's a new banner, it's a new installation. There's no real enforcement on this. So what I'm looking at is how do we work with code enforcement and planning to create an enforceable ordinance, reduce sign clutter, but still be fair? And again, we're not talking about permanent signage, so we're not talking about neon signs and windows. We're not talking about permanent signage attached to the exterior facade of the building. We are talking about temporary flags and banners and A-frame signs and inflatables. And all it does when you drive down the corridor is create sign clutter, and then you can't see any of it, because there's too much information being directed towards you.
So before, John, hang on a second. Let me, tell me again what your change would be? I mean, I got the non-inflatable device, but what was the other? Say that again, please.
So currently, flags and banners, you would be able to have one per frontage with a limit of two total. What I'm suggesting is that a business would be allowed one flag or banner, period.
Regardless where?
Right. They can choose which frontage they want to install it on, so they're still getting their temporary signage or promotional signage. I'm not suggesting that we change the 30 consecutive days in any 90-day period, which gives them four months out of the year that they can have a banner up or a flag up. What I'm saying is that I don't want to see multiple banners on every frontage on commercial buildings in town, because it just creates clutter.
Yeah, I kind of read that the way you just said. I mean, that's how I kind of interpreted the first one. Okay. Supervisor Barrett? Yeah, I'd just like to add, Brad brings up a point where he says they could have it for four months out of the 12. That's a problem for us. We're paying these code enforcement people to do more than just look at signs. As far as I'm concerned, we're policing something that we're forced to police, because we've made it too liberal. The problem is, it's just, it's a little bit like having to take care of the dogs and cats that run free in your city, because people don't take care of their own situation. I do not see why the city has to pay a code enforcement officer to go around constantly trying to outguess what the businesses are going to do next to try and work this, whatever we put in the ordinance. I'd just like to make a statement of what's allowed and let it go at that. But I'm sure I'm not going to get anywhere with that.
I'll make a comment. I happen to agree with inflatables with a special use permit. I think that's more enforceable. And I agree with, and I agree with John in the fact that code enforcement has a lot more responsibilities and a lot more important things to be dealing with than policing signs. So we do have to be stringent with how we go forward on this.
Another idea, then. So I want to make sure I'm understanding where you want to go. How about it's, right now, we have flag and banner are separate. So could we just say you get one flag or one banner, but you can keep it all year, and you don't care? They get one, there's, that takes code enforcement's just walking around saying there's one, they don't care whether it's a flag or a banner. Cuts down all the code enforcement work. They can trade it out every, to whatever their new special of the month is, because that, I mean, I'm assuming that's why you're putting a banner up, to say, "Such-and-such is on sale for 10 cents," or whatever. So how about they get only one per building, and we eliminate the code enforcement issue, and like you said, "Oh, that's 31 days, I caught you." I kind of agree with, I think that's a waste of code enforcement time. How about just one, and it's a flag or a banner?
I understand where you're going with that, Lori, and I'm open to discussions on that. What I'm trying to avoid is the under-new ownership banner that I've seen up for two years.
Right.
It happens to replace signage.
Now we're going to a different answer, right? Saying what goes on a sign, I don't know, but I'm trying to cut the clutter to one.
Let's take some public comment first before we go through. Public comment. Anybody? Come on up.
I'm Lenny Manning, and I'm representing It's a Girl Think Consignment Store at the North End in Frontier Plaza. We've had, we've been in business nine years, and every day, people come in, "We couldn't find you. We didn't know you were here." We have tried to put the flag out. It's right in front of our window. It's a flag that just says "consignment." When you're driving that North End, you cannot see on that billboard. When you're looking for a business, and there's a lot of traffic right in those two driveways, people have been almost hit in the crosswalk while they're looking around for our signage. Sometimes the trees grow up to where our signage is not seen. We have to get with the landlord and try to get them to cut down the trees so that we can be seen. He's next door to us. It's very frustrating. When we have the flag that's hot pink and just says "consignment," and it's in the planter, possibly 20 feet from the building this way, we're busy. So in response to you, John, it is, it helps our business. It really does. Especially when you can't see it from the Especially when you can't see it from the road. When we go downtown, one of the other owner who's not here today, when she goes downtown in the historical part, she's looking at the flowers, and she sees the signs go, that's distracting as well, just the flower buckets, the maps to the different areas. That could be a distraction as well. And our Frontier sign is huge, and you get this little thing that says It's a Girl Thing, but people are looking sideways, trying to find where we are. We do not keep it up consecutively because we're only open four days a week. If it's really windy, we don't put the flag up because it can pose a danger, and the flag has flown off. What we want to do is just to be able to put the flag out. We're open 10 to 5 Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Some Saturdays, we're open. We're trying to do soft openings because we are with the Downtown Business Association as well, but we're grandfathered in from a while back. So we're able to pour at different businesses and venues. They have us come in. It helps our business. We aren't open on Saturdays all the time yet, but we did one soft opening. We're going to try to do that to get the wine walkers to the North End of town. So really, we need help from you guys. Not everybody in the complex puts a flag or a sandwich board out or anything. We've tried both. We've been asked to put it down a month ago, and I was a little offended in the fact when I said, "Well, we're not open every day. When it's windy, we bring it in." And they're like, "No, you've been up there consecutively, but we aren't." And we're very conscientious about the danger if, with cars or people getting out if it's super windy, because, you know, like I said, things have flown away. But we really would like you to consider being able to have the flags up. We noticed that the cars, car lots have them up constantly. They're allowed. We noticed that the businesses off Main Street, Hot Springs Road, other businesses that are off, over off Research Way, different areas there, some people have flags. They have sandwich boards. They aren't getting told to take them down. If they are, we don't hear about it, and they still put them up anyway. So, you know, do you want us to put a flag on the roof? Would that be considered okay? You know, we just need to have something that really does help our business to keep its doors open, and people can find us easier without rear-ending somebody in front of the complex or things like that. I mean, it's really, it is very important, and it shouldn't be just okay for downtown to have. Thank you.
My name's David, and I'm the manager at Wild Bills. We're actually next to It's a Girl Thing. If you look at where our business is located, you cannot see it from the road. We constantly have to tell our landlord to cut down the tree, but every month, every other month. And it just, it's costly at this point. And it's the same with us. We've been told that our flag has been out for 30 consecutive days within a 90-day period, which is not the truth. We are open five days a week. It does come down every night if we put it out. Same thing with us. We only put it out if it's not windy out. And we were also targeted a month ago, same as our neighbors, for the same reasons. And it's gotten to the point where, reading it, I understand that we could have it on our roof. So we mounted it on our roof, and they haven't messed with us since then, but it's been about a week. Do you want us to do that, or, you know, continue putting it out three days a week? Because if you do the math, three days a week would still be, would be exactly 30 days within a 90-day period. And my, I have the same concerns as our neighbors. Why are car lots allowed to have these up literally every single day of the year, including the weekends, including night? It's not fair.
Well, I think that, not debating or arguing with you, but I think that if you change, if you clarify the rules that was there, is that it would make it uniform throughout the city, so that you wouldn't have to have folks getting into that argument of your sign's been up, your sign's been down. And you'd also avoid that issue of, okay, well, I only open my business four days a week, therefore, you know, the 90 days really should be 90-plus because I'm only four days. I mean, if you follow that argument down to its logical conclusion, if your business only opens one day, then, you know, you can have it up forever, or whatever the math works out on that. So, anyway. Okay. All right. All right. Anything else?
I just want to mention that the officer came last month and told us to take it down. And I said, "What about the sandwich sign?" He said, "Well, it can be down ways under the window." But the sandwich sign, you can't see it. It's, you know, that high, ours, you can't see it from the street. So it's really redundant for us to put it, prop it up against, flat up against, he said, under the window, which cars are blocking because they park right in front. Again, if they're looking for that little sandwich sign, if we advertise it on Facebook or in our, on our website, look for the little itty-bitty sign, they're not going to find it. And so the A-frame signs don't work for us. They may for other businesses. But the little flags, they help us. I mean, people can find us. So thank you for your consideration.
Lee, could you address the auto dealers, that they actually have different standards?
Yeah, I could look when it was on the code here, but the auto dealers do, in fact, have different standards, and that was a conscious decision that was added by the Board of Supervisors. Kind of trying to scan through the ordinance here, but it was a number of years ago now. I mean, let's just say it was about 10 years ago or so, eight years ago. Don't know exactly what it was, but I, again, that's probably mostly a different board, but the thought being that the auto dealers have, they have a different business model, for one thing. They bring in a lot of, they're very important to the sales tax of Carson City in that they represent a very large percentage of it. They brought in a package that with, in other words, instead of having to come in for a special use permit for a little bit bigger sign and for more flags and things, we adopted a code at that time that allowed for more signage and flags for auto dealers. And because, and that's the alternative. So they were coming in for special use permits for these things before that, but we adopted standards that allowed for it because they're, because they're new car auto dealers. I mean, there's no doubt about that. It's because they sell, they're new car auto dealers. And that is the alternative for anybody that needs more signage, even if it's more flags, to come in and get a special use permit for more permanent signage, to have signage that's, if you want signs beyond these temporary signs in size or duration, you can get a special use permit to do that. The most recent example being what is now the new Nissan, Nissan, no, not Nissan dealer, the new Hyundai dealer, which was a used car dealership at the time, so it didn't get the new car dealerships, but they got a special use permit for the flags that they have out. Now they're a new car dealer, and they fall under that anyway.
Okay. All right. Further public comment?
I'll just take this brief moment, too. I just wanted to note that the code enforcement, they're applying the consecutive days correctly for the, for the temporary signs, because what the code says is that you have a 30 consecutive day window in which you can just have the, have the flags, and then you have to, then there's a window of 60 days when you, when you can't have it. How often they're used is not addressed, their actual use is not addressed in there. And that kind of points out, as you were discussing earlier, the difficulty in enforcement. Somebody's doing it three days a week. Somebody's doing it four days a week. There's no way we would know that.
So in your opinion, the special use permit is the easiest way for code enforcement, correct?
Well, special, yeah, there might be more to it than that. I mean, I think.
Well, special events, special use.
Special event. So generally with sign, generally with sign enforcement and any of these standards, anything that, anything that removes the time limitations and just says how, where and when, and where and how big it is, is easiest. So that when they drive by, that sign's permitted to be there. It's not going back and just seeing if it was there 30 days ago or not. It's just, is it permitted to be there? Is it, and is it too tall or whatever?
And to clarify, too, special events or special use.
And special event or special use, then they would have that, and that's permitted to be there.
Exactly. Okay. So.
All right. Mr. Munnings?
Yeah, my name's Gene Munnings, and I'm the owner of a business on North Carson Street, just south of where they are in the Carson Shopping Center, which most people don't even know that even exists, because there's no big sign that says Carson Shopping Center. And my business exists from the curb to the front door is 166 feet. We took measuring things, two of them to get that far. So, and there's others along there, then there's ones on Carson Street, but they face north. You would never see them unless you were coming from the north, because they have no frontage to the street. The thing is that I disagree with when they said 20 feet from, within 20 feet of your front door. That's in the parking lot. We can't put anything up to six feet from our door out, because then our special use permit takes over, and they're in our standards for that whole shopping center. Nobody can put anything in that six-foot public walkway. So we would have to put it out in the middle of, ours would be in the middle of our display area. Nobody'd see it. So I use this one. This came from advertising. It's just very simple. It just says a name, no name, it's nursery gift, and it's arrow. It goes both ways, and we put a sandbag on it. And I only put it out maybe two or three days a week I can get it out there. It's about six, six and a half feet. There's a little mark on the, because we don't have a public sidewalk. We just have blacktop. So there's like an X there, and I just put it there, which is about six and a half feet from the street. Because we don't have, they never, it's the only place you look, there is no sidewalks. You know, poured as cement versus, versus blacktop. And, but if I can't put it out like today, it's supposed to be windy, I wouldn't put it out. In fact, I even take our, don't put our little, our US flagging all out because of the wind. Anytime we get over 30 miles an hour, you can forget it. And we get, most of our business comes not from Carson City. Surprising, 80% comes from Washoe County or Douglas County. And then we have a small portion that comes from California, Southern California, that they come visit people up here, and we have to ship stuff back for them. And it's funny, because you think Carson City, but we don't, we don't sell much in Carson City. The landscape part does, but not the store. You have a principle in here on page four. It says guiding principle five. It says it's for a strong diversified economic base. The city will seek to maintain and enhance its enviable base of primary jobs and to provide a broader range of retail services that serve both the residents of Carson City and those in surrounding counties. By telling somebody they can't put it up near the street, which downtown can because they're all the way to the street, but the people that sit back should have a situation where they can come six feet from the curb, at least six feet or more, back in. 20 feet would put you in the middle of somebody's parking space. You know, you're not encouraging business. And on page 14, where they had the list of the proposals on here, it could be easily solved by changing number two and three by adding the word, "The sign must be placed either," put the word either, "within 20 feet of the business entrance, or if placed in a pedestrian sidewalk or walkway, a minimum of six feet of unobstructed sidewalk clearance must be maintained." By using the word either or in there would give you an option if you're near the street, you have to be back, you can right close to your business, but if you're not, like the shopping center, they could be up near Carson Street. But I never leave this up at night, never. I mean, I never, we're not there. We don't want people coming in, and we don't want people vandalizing stuff. And the other people in our shopping, most of them wouldn't do anything, because the beauty shops, they have their own clientele, and they're not trying to grow anymore. And the only other place we have is the computer and the cyber cafe that wanted to put a sign out. And he has it now sitting in front of his door, out on the sidewalk, and they've never said anything, but it just sits there because he had it out, and it's too heavy. He has to put on a dolly to get it out there. He has custom-made wood, and you just can't lift it, because he didn't want it to blow over from the wind. And they told him he couldn't, so he put it up there. And this leaves it sit there. I said, "Well, it doesn't make any sense, because your arrow, you have to turn it the other way, because your arrow is pointing to our store."
All right. Got it, Gene. Thank you. All right. Yes, ma'am?
And I'm Penny Hutzstetler, and I'm one of the owners of It's a Girl Thing.
I didn't catch your first name. I'm sorry.
Penny.
Penny, how are you?
Hi. And I, you know, don't want to reiterate what Lenny said, but just from hearing some of the comments, it sounds like you're really not supporting your smaller businesses. Your bigger businesses can get the flags and the advertising that they need, but your smaller ones like ours, I mean, sometimes we just, you know, it's hard to make ends meet. And then additional costs for just to put out a flag for a special permit. Basically, we put it out so that people can find us. We're in that same corner as the gun shop. And you're driving by, and our signs that they provide doesn't, you know, you're lucky if you can find it on the big sign. And there again, with our trees, so, you know, we don't, I don't feel that we abuse the usage of that sign. And even our landlord has said he has no issue with it being in front of our, it's actually in the flower, flower, flower area right in front of our business. It's not even on the street, so. But it just seems like the smaller businesses are getting penalized.
Landlord have any objection to fixing the signage? Does the landlord have any objection to fixing the signage on that shopping center right there, so it's more noticeable?
I don't think that it's possible, because it's huge and it has all the different ones.
It's huge, and it has all of the different ones within the shopping center. We do have one on the building, but sometimes it's covered by a tree.
Just thought. All right. Thank you, Penny. Okay. Okay. All right. We'll have to see where we go with the thing. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? Okay.
Nobody left here.
Nobody left here. It's not noon yet. Okay. All right, board. These are tough decisions. We'll see where we go.
If I could, Mayor.
You want to make a motion, then we'll see where it goes? Or you want to talk?
Discussion.
Discussion's fine.
If that's okay. I think after hearing the testimony, I think I would be okay with Laurie's suggestion that we remove time limits and allow either one flag or banner attached to the building per retail storefront, not per frontage. I think that complies with what I'm looking for, which is simplicity and what Lee mentioned, simplicity of the ordinance for code enforcement purposes. And, you know, I was in retail for 19 years, so I understand what it's like to run a retail business. But at the same time, businesses make a conscious decision on the location that they lease at. And if signage or visibility or a number of other variables doesn't work for your business in a retail location, then at some point, I think that it's incumbent upon you to look at changing your location. You know, I don't think that we, as a body, should try to design legislation for a single location. And that's really what we're being asked to do here today, is that there's one specific one-block area that encompasses two shopping centers where signage and visibility is an issue. Or at least, that's the people that have chosen to show up here today for public comment. So I don't know that we want to design legislation for a one-block area. We have to look at the entire city. So, again, removing the per-frontage language for banners and flags, allowing one flag or banner permanently, it can be changed out. There's no change to the A-frame signs, and then the inflatables would be with a special event permit.
Yes, I'd like to subscribe to everything Brad just said, but I still probably can't support this because I just don't like the A-frame signs. I think they are the, they're just, well, they're what Stan Jones told us when we first talked about that. So, you know, when it looks like Acapulco, I go ahead, wherever I'm talking about, or wherever he was talking about. And I want to emphasize what Brad said, and And, and, and I want to emphasize what Brad said and I don't have any quarrel with what you folks are saying. Although I don't think that signs necessarily make the difference. I do know they make a difference. I don't think they make the difference as to whether you survive, thrive, or have problems because there are so many other inputs. I also was in retail at one point. I understand what you're saying, but he's right. We cannot make all the rules fit every set of circumstances. And this town, and the only thing I would quarrel with what you're saying about is that the community needs to attract people and we do support business. Just because you're not pleased with what we do up here necessarily doesn't mean we don't support business. I just want to say that, although I am a great advocate of everyone coming in and telling us how they feel about things and I take it into consideration. I just am not a great believer in the fact that signs help that much. They help some. But I will also say this, that my view doesn't prevail here necessarily. So, if I can support it, I will, but A-frames really take me out of the picture.
So Brad, what you're proposing is one flag or banner attached to the building?
That's correct. Freestanding flags or, right. And, and the inflatables would only be allowed with a special event permit. Which means that they're very short-term. Generally, that would be for one day or maybe a couple of days.
Right.
Right. So they would have to be attached to the building. Any freestanding promotional flag is only with a special events permit.
Just to clarify, then the one flag on your building on the roof would, you only get one, would suffice? Because it'd be attached to his building, he gets one? Okay.
Lee is nodding yes.
Right. So that you can do that? Okay. I can look at that.
All right. Try a motion.
It's actually a better view because it-
See where it goes.
I think we're doing a good job for code enforcement too. They might like this.
Well, by the way, it was Tijuana, not Acapulco.
Bill number's 112?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to introduce on first reading, bill number, should we be doing a first reading or should we send this back, Lee? Do you want to recraft the language and bring it back to us?
Just try it here. Let's do it first. All right. Let's do it. Get it done.
Bring it back to first reading and try to make these changes.
You know, I'm pretty comfortable with these changes coming in directly to second, a second reading.
You're making everybody happy. I move to introduce on first reading, bill number 112, An Ordinance Amending Title 18, Appendix of the Carson City Municipal Code to amend regulations related to temporary banners, flags, A-frame signs, and other temporary sign devices per the direction and discussion of the board here today. Is that adequate?
Discussion's in order.
Quickly, I just want to say I think you've crafted something that's pretty good here. I don't agree with it, but that doesn't mean anything. I'm happy to be the minority report. Generally speaking though, it's pretty good work.
Well, you know, is there, is there a second on a motion?
I did, yes.
Okay, so we're on discussion. All right. You know, John, I don't think you're the only one who, I mean, you may be a little further on the, you know, heart, on the issue.
Go ahead, say to the right.
No, it's either, I don't, not right or left or whatever.
I'm not sure which direction it is.
But I think, you know, it's an improvement over where we are. And, and, you know, these things are always difficult. I mean, you've got all kinds of little things playing in there, so I'm okay with this.
Well, and my comment too. Having the flags attached to the building also eliminates some of that wind issue that everybody's talking about and then becoming a projectile.
And if I could, Mayor, I think you bring up an excellent point, that this is better than what we have and it will allow code enforcement to go out and do their work over a period of time and see how this works. And if it's not working, then we can revisit this in another year and tweak it again, but I think that this is a major step in the right direction.
I wouldn't, before we go, I wouldn't mind having something in there about, but we won't do it now, but at some point, if, if the businesses aren't taking down the tattered signs or, you know, the bad sandwich boards that, I don't want to get into design standards for this, but by the same token, we're trying to make this community business-friendly and that takes everybody, including the businesses. So I want them to do that and have, have that on the record. I'm sure they'll take note.
All right. Are we ready?
Lee, is that, that language is already in the ordinance, isn't it? That the, yeah.
Maintenance is in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's in the ordinance, but they're not doing it. That's what I'm saying.
On general signs or the, just in general on signs? Are you talking about generally signs or not specifically just these?
No, not specifically. I'm just saying that they-
They need to be kept up and it's in the ordinance, but again, we're enforcing it.
I said, it's not, we're not enforcing it and now we won't have code enforcement looking for it, so we got to keep, keep on top of that, I still think.
All right. All right, board. Make sure I got my... All right. On the motion, there's been a motion and a second on the motion, further discussion. Hearing no, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay.
Nay.
Carry. Thank you. For the planning commission, thank you for doing the first cut on this stuff, so I know you're here listening. Okay. All right.
It didn't come up.
You got enough, Lee, on that?
You got it, Kathy.
Dan, you okay?
You have a lot for us to do.
City manager, you okay?
I'm okay.
Speak up now.
There it is. Okay.
Or forever hold your peace, what they say. All right.
She voted for you.
All right. We're getting ready to recess, but let's take up board supervisors, non-action items. Anything from anybody? Nothing? All right. Then are we ready to recess until 2 o'clock and we'll take up the board appointments? We ready? Okay. Hearing no objection, we'll be in recess until 2 o'clock.